Is there anyone in the audience that hasn't signed in? Please move some out.
We're waiting at the hall.
Okay.
I'm going to go down. Someone order a burger. I need a bar of wine. Bar of wine, a beer one.
Okay.
For all my things. He's taking spoilers.
You're gonna be busy reading all these letters. On a letter screen.
I'm just gonna incorporate my reference.
You know, we've been looking for people. Tell me this. Okay, is anybody from Boller Engineering here?
Someone just. Difficult to hear.
Here's a bunch of media, I got the food, you can sit on those.
Charlie, ready to start it? Let's call the meeting to order, please. Uh, let's see, Mark Irman is excused. Believe OJ is here via Zoom.
Oh, he found him on there earlier.
I think most of you are here for the short-term rentals, so I will take a motion. Uh, skip over item two and move on to continuing another business. Item three, add short-term rental ordinance. Second, all in favor? Anyone opposed?
Okay.
Can we get a note?
Joe made a motion, Paul seconded it.
Yep, we got a lot, where's OJ? We gotta get his. Vote. OJ, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, and I, yes, I vote yes.
Select Board have asked Planning Board to consider adding short-term rental ordinance to the planning board ordinance. Number four, have any questions or comments, moment? Promotion, open public comment.
Second. Josh and Art, Paul blown second.
Paul seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so, ask everyone, you all get a chance to speak if you desire, after keep your comments to five minutes if possible. Like to start off, people who are in favor, this speak.
Paul? Just make sure that they introduce themselves.
Yeah, please introduce yourself as well. Anyone like to speak?
What you're talking about.
In favor of what?
In favor of the short-term rental ordinance, in favor of the board enacting it.
Can you explain?
Jim? Jim?
Yeah, OJ?
Would, would, would you like just a little introduction as far as the history and where we, why, you know, why we got to where we're at right now?
Please.
Well. Paul, and this ordinance tonight is, was introduced to the planning board by the Board of Select. This is not a, this is not a planning board sponsored ordinance, this is the Board of Select sponsored ordinance.
And that is correct. Um, back when the, uh, planning board was looking at potential, uh, land use plan ordinance changes, um, the majority of the board voted not to have any discussion on short-term rentals, um, as part of the, any ordinance change. The Board of Selectmen have heard from many people about the, uh, effect that the, uh, proliferation of short-term rentals has had on the town of Lincoln and decided that rather than letting three people decide this issue, that really the voters of the whole town should decide it. So, so we were in favor of putting this up for the voters to decide on. Um, not saying that we're all a hundred percent for this or, or not, other than that it's really an issue because we've heard so much about it, uh, that we thought the, the voters should be the ones who make the decision. The, there is already a, um, an ordinance regarding short-term rentals that requires registration and it talks about safety and parking and a lot of these other, other aspects of this ordinance change. The big difference is that with this ordinance, short-term rentals will be restricted from the three main residential zones, unless of course, they're already existing, uh, by law, they will be grandfathered. And, and that's really what we've been hearing from people is that the town of Lincoln is no longer a community, it's one big hotel. And, and every house, or many houses on, you know, church, pleasant, school, La Brex, all these small streets have, have turned into basically a, 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 a single room or single unit, um, hotel. And that is really affecting the fabric of our community in that local people don't have anywhere to live. And well, you know, and first of all, in full disclosure, I own several Airbnbs in the town of Lincoln. But the, the effect that this is having on the town of Lincoln is that the, th- there is no place left for, um, locals to live. And yes, sometimes, you know, the Airbnb tenants are much better to have as neighbors. Um, most of the time they're out doing fun stuff, they're there to have a good time, et cetera. As opposed, if you have a neighbor who, who for some reason is, is disturbing, they're there twenty-four seven, they, they live next to you all the time, they don't go home. That is their home. But with that being said, what we're losing is full-time residents. We're losing the people who will become our, you know, basketball coaches, our, uh, scout leaders, our school volunteers. All, all of these things that, that it takes to, to create a community, we're losing because there's no place for them to live and, and locals are moving out of, out of town, um, and, and their houses are being turned into short-term rentals. So with that being said, we want, we wanted to hear from, from, um, people, I'm sure there's people both for and against this, this ordinance proposal, um, that's why we, we sent it to the planning board to, um, again, get some input on it and, and bring it to the town for a vote.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members have anything they want to say?
Yeah.
Not yet, okay.
The way it's presented, I'm totally against it for one reason. You got, it is including Flairbrook one, Flairbrook two, Ramslo one, and a bunch of other condos, uh, Josh and Art, if people don't know me. Except for the association, each association has the right to control what they want for their, their units, some part of downtown. This should, the ordinance should be, should be in Taj, it should be grass, and so it affects the downtown community, the old millhouses, being converted to Airbnb. So they, you have a piece of land up to Vishna, Vishwood, Flairbrook, Flairbrook one, Flairbrook two, Coolidge, Old Village. They'll be severely restricted by the ordinance in the long term. And most people can't afford to live in those places, it's not ours, some people can. The rent is way too high. They're not too high, but for the, for the people that work in town, they're out of their reach. Same with Mansion Hill and a few of the other places. The association should be able to control their own destiny and Airbnb for the association.
Okay.
Yeah, hi, my name's K. Roberts, uh, I, I live in Ramslo, oh, I have a place. And I'm also president of the Association there for the last fifteen years, so I've dealt with a lot of these issues internally. So I just want to, I'm not super clear on what the ordinance is proposing. But it sounds like based on what you say, what you just said, that we won't, as a board, be able to, you know, we have a lot of momentum in Ramslo to get rid of short-term rentals, right? And granted, there's people that want it because they can get a pile of money, right, it looks like. But the reality is a lot of homeowners don't want to be bought. So are you saying that our board cannot change our bylaws, which we are in the process of doing? That's why I'm asking you, I'm just asking.
My opinion, no, you should be able to make your own regulations for your own, for your own community, each association should be able to.
Right.
The town leaders can be, in my opinion, not be restricted each and every association to their whims. It should be the whims of the association to enact their own bylaws, protect it.
Correct, so, so any short-term rental you have there that's registered, they're grandfathered, but no new ones will be allowed after March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, this is an accurate town meeting.
So we, so if everybody in Ramslo registered their property, I'm just making this up, they could be grandfathered.
They would be grandfathered as far as the town, but you're free to make something more stringent, that's your, you know, that's your prerogative as a board.
Well, for us, it's, and I don't want to derail the meeting, but for us, it's a different challenge. You would think on one side, well, the location's great, let's rent, you know, make a lot of money.
Yeah.
The reality is, it's a real problem, because there's fifty-one townhomes in Ramslo. Each owner is grand, is, 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 is deeded two parking spaces, one of them is in your garage, if you have a garage. Thirty-nine out of the fifty-one units have a garage. The reality is, every homeowner also has two guest parking passes, and we've had to implement a guest parking plan because parking in Ramslo is a complete nightmare, we're people poaching every day. I probably, we probably took forty cars a year, no question. But the reality is, we only have twenty-five spots for those hundred passes, if all the fifty-one owners have two passes, right? So the problem is, when you rent an Airbnb in Close Side, that's what, you, you, like I told you, you tell all your friends and eight cars show up and trash. And it's a nightmare, we can't handle that. Fortunately, we live one or two people doing it, but God forbid, half the property did it, I don't think they would, they want it out. But that's the challenge we have. I mean, personally, I get it, who doesn't want to make some money? But as a property in a community, it's a real problem, so, uh, yeah, so I was just trying to figure out where you were getting at with the ordinance, right?
Yeah, thank you. What's your name?
Uh, yeah, hi, my name is Katie Dodge, I live on Maple Street, I'm a full-time resident. Little background on me, I am a certified manager of community institutions. Used to manage a whole portfolio of condos in McQuinney, New Hampshire, so I can certainly understand your concern, uh, at your association. I also commend the Selectmen and the Planning Board for considering this issue. Um, just to go back to your question about whether they can affect your bylaws, um, I believe, and of course, you probably want to ask an attorney this, but the town ordinance would supersede any of your association documents. So, um, it wouldn't, it would really be all about the town ordinance. Um, I just had a couple of questions about, um, the issues and particularly the purpose of this warrant article. Specifically, was there an impact study that was done? Is there any data that supports the complaints about the short-term rentals and, and their impact on the community?
So, we didn't propose this as a planning board, so, well, planning board hasn't had any studies.
Right.
And we haven't received any written complaint.
We haven't, we haven't received any complaints.
So there's nothing, to, to your knowledge, that the select board has done to investigate the issue?
They haven't shown us anything.
So there's no data, I mean, it's, so it could be like the three percent, right? Okay, right. Um, and do we know what the percentages of short-term versus long-term rentals in the community, has there been sort of an occupancy study?
Nothing has been provided to the planning board.
All right. There, there is something that's handed out to people on the air.
The rental registration.
The registration, that's what you should be.
Well, there's about four hundred of registered now, but.
Good, good.
But she.
Well, all right, and, and just, uh, just finally, and I'll be done, I just have one more question. Would the, and, and who actually processes these short-term rental registrations, is it the planning board?
No. Carol?
Okay, so, um, so this, at the, at the time that, um, we decided to go with Granicus, which is the company that we're using to register short-term rental.
Okay.
Uh, at that time, you know, they had between nine hundred and something, um, short-term rentals in the town of Lincoln. And there is some overlap because they're, but they're still with a significant number of, um, units. So between nine hundred and somewhere in there. So, that was how many people were advertising when Granicus did the review and gave us the proposal, um, for registering.
Okay, so you've got an outdoor third party that is an online registration?
And we did, um, John Beard, who's the fire chief, um, he also started doing research to find, figure out how many uh, short-term rentals we have listed on the various platforms. And we also started comparing, um, because he was getting calls to places where, you know, there was supposed to be a three-bedroom and they had twelve people in the unit. And so we started getting concerned about the capacity, uh, for some of those places.
Yeah, understood. Okay, so there's nothing that's super concrete or any analytics that's specifically been done that anyone knows of?
Well, just the nine hundred that they.
So is this co- computer software, this, this third party, are they prepared, if this passes, in, in your opinion? Um, if this does pass, do you think that they're prepared for the number of people that are going to start registering?
Well, they've had, I think we had an additional sixty in the past few days.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Okay. Ken?
Uh, my name's Kyle Turley. Oh, well, nothing, I got confused with people a lot of times. Um, my name is Kyle Turley, I own on Bloom Road in Coolidge Falls. Um, I am on the Board of Directors there, although I am here in my personal capacity, I know Danielle well, we go back at least a couple of years now. But I'm here in my personal capacity. And I'm also an attorney, which is sort of relevant to one of the points that I'll make with expertise in cybersecurity and data protection. So generally, I am against the ordinance. So generally, I am against the ordinance being proposed, uh, I do, uh, rent the property that I own. Um, I'm going to try to stay away from some of the policy arguments and just be a little bit more factual, um, I did send a letter in. Uh, so I'll try to be a little bit factual and just hit the highlights. Number one, the section that requires collecting data for all occupants almost certainly will violate all sorts of data protection laws out there, especially when it comes to data pertaining to children. So, and in the letter that I sent, as you outlined, some of the, the laws and whatnot, this is a very complicated area. Um, so, I mean, I know the town has an attorney and all, this is a very specialized area, I happen to work in this area, I'm also happy to answer questions. So that's number one, I think it would violate, require that individuals, let alone that the town probably do not have the proper infrastructure in place to deal with the data compliance, so that's just a, I don't think that's even arguable. Uh, the requirement that there is a certain number of parking spots per sleeping unit, a very quick review of the, uh, the rentals that are available, if you look at the bedrooms, you can have one person, you can have ten people. But frankly, in my opinion, I don't think you should tie, that the ordinance should tie parking to the number of sleeping units, if anything. Well, I believe it should be left up to the H O A, if the house is in the H O A, they should, they are the best, they are the entities best suited to deal with the community and the parking situation, like, uh, Ramsorn, you know, they know the parking situation they have, Coolidge, Clearbrook and Solem, but if it isn't going to be tied to anything, it should be tied to the number of individuals that the house can boast when they are renting, not the sleeping units. The last thing I'll mention is some of the e-res and safety requirements, now I totally support providing safe rentals, totally get it, totally agree with it. But when you dig into, the, the, the ordinance right now says that all requirements must be adhered to, and when you dig into some of these requirements in the National Fire Code and some of these other things, when you look at the age of the houses that are here that were built before two thousand and six, when the means of escape were significantly changed in the International Residential Code and the Fire Code, many of the houses in this area, especially when you consider the mountainous terrain, more than likely are not going to comply with every single, all requirements of the National Safety Code or the International Residential Code, so at a minimum, I would suggest that houses that were built under the old code would be grandfathered into the old codes. And failing that, then you have a situation where whoever is doing the inspecting has the ability to, at their discretion, and say, okay, this may not stringently require, uh, adhere to the code, but nonetheless, it is still okay. So that's my comments, and again, if there's any questions on that data protection issue, because it is very complicated.
I got a question, so if I collect somebody's data, I mean, if I gave someone my data, I would expect they wouldn't be able to give it, just give it out to anybody without a court order.
Uh, so, it, I'm providing legal advice, I work for the town, so, right. Um, it does depend on the situation, um, I would say that when you're talking about Airbnb in the town, right, you're not talking about, if I just provide you, you know, individually, my information, probably wouldn't be covered by the law, however, when you're talking about people, hotels, people running an Airbnb, they're treated as a business under any of these laws around the world, and the global laws would apply here because you are, we are talking about people that are registering and booking the Airbnb, or short-term rentals from other parts of the world, so we would have to comply with, and the town would have to comply with the European G D P, they would have to comply with the California C C P A, they would have to comply, comply with O P O, which is the federal law that deals with the data relating to children. So I cannot imagine that the town or any Airbnb owner has this type of, uh, 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 you know, infrastructure in place to deal with.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Kane?
I'd like to get back to the village piece, and I think the village piece is where, where my house is, if any others beside me in the school area. Does it include college road and mine, is that what you're thinking, or is it just us?
No.
They are prohibited. They're not allowed in the following zones, military residential, general residential, rural residential, small business development district.
I personally feel that Airbnb is, is not a horrific thing, and actually, it's better than a full-time rental sometimes, I've rented full-time too, and it's horrendous. Then you go to civil court and you wait twenty years to get any money, so you get up. So, I feel we have the right to do what we want in our homes. We own the homes, I bought it in ninety-seven, I own the homes, I built it, I added on to it, I took care of it, kept it up, and someone's going to tell me I can't do what I want in my own home, I don't agree to that. You know, in all the years too, this, in the last two years, or three that I've been gone, it's all he does. And then we have to pay for them, except living in the rural area, okay, we can't make any money for that, that I can't do in my house, I don't, here. But we can't, you know, we can't do anything, but it's okay to have these guys build across, when you uh, across the road, just have this guy's going to build up here, this guy's built up here, an hotel, and you're going to tell the people in the village they can't do anything?
That's not, so.
That's.
Which, so, you know. Hold on, hold on, one and five, Kane, Kane, you got a direct comment to the board?
I'm trying to, but it's time. So, I'm just saying, it's, it's people's homes, you know what I mean, I'm not going to rent it out, I don't have any plans on renting out, but if someone wants to rent it out, all the second homeowners, that's all they ever do, right, are you going to stop them?
According to this.
Good luck, because it will never stop, because ordinances aren't endorsed in Lincoln, I know that's the birthday. They've been on all boards, I've been in, in civil service for twelve years, I know what happens and what doesn't. And people are just going to do what they want to do, and if you put this enacted, no way you're going to get through. And shame on the people who allow this town to look like it looks, that's all I have to say.
In the back?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I had one comment that I would permit not to mention earlier, but to your point about owning a property, I, I completely agree with that. The reality is, in our case, when your property and your activity starts to impact other people, then it crosses a line and has to be looked at, right? That's number one, but my point I wanted to make was that, you, you guys might recall, obviously, seven years ago, we had a pretty bad fire on the ranch. We lost three, very expensive homes. Um, uh, our insurance used to be twenty-five grand, our insurance now is a hundred and fifty grand. My insurance, our insurance company will cut our insurance forty grand if we get rid of the short-term.
Okay, that's, I mean, that's not for your, it's not for you and your woman, thank you.
Can I just make one quick comment for anybody that, uh, wants to come? You can go online and see what the current, uh, joining locations are by street, by building, um, in the interactive map that you can click on from the town, for anybody that wants to know specific.
Hi, Brett Owen, I'm at thirty-one O'Brien, actually thirty-four Mano. Um, if I understand this correctly, this was pummeled in by town people and residents that don't have affordable place.
What a selectman has to consider, I don't know what.
So, I understand that, I sympathize with that, what has the town done to incentivize development for low-income or affordable housing, workforce housing? Nothing, everything I see is luxury, this luxury, that, everywhere you go, what are you doing to incentivize development? What is the state doing, what is the town doing? Nothing, you're collecting taxes from everybody, tourists, second homeowners, and you're doing nothing but allowing this giant developments to keep continuing. And now it's, now it's short-term rental.
That's right.
It has nothing to do with short-term rental, you can stop them all and shut them all down, it's not going to change a damn thing until you start incentivizing people to come in and develop affordable housing for residents or the workforce.
Exactly.
Do nothing to do that, and I'm not saying you, I'm saying the town in general.
Totally agree with that. About ten years ago, I tried to bring in a center force and, if you're building condos, you can have more units of property if you build a lower quality unit, outside all the same, it's lower quality, there'll be exclusively for town residents and for curious people working in the safety services or the other town, but nobody wanted to hear it in the town. But right now, Lincoln's got a bigger problem than that, where by three miles wide, three and a half miles long, and all the more, unless we have less than five percent of the land in Lincoln that's totally usable, the rest is all natural forest, safe forest. We don't really have much place to go, continue to waste some people's property, which I don't want to take in mind, the clock don't, it doesn't, that's the only place they could actually go, but it's no one, no one can help it. That's a big problem Lincoln has, and I don't see a very good solution for it. Through more expanded, like, we're talking, a lot of land all the way from down to Mary Lake and all that, back forth, if you find places. I'm not trying to push you enough, but that's the reality of the town, fact of the reality.
Sarah?
Hi, I'm Sarah Berger, I like to consider myself a hybrid, I have a long-term rental and a short-term rental. Brett, I think was your name, Brett, um, mentioned incentives and what I've seen, other resorts around the country do, pay owners an incentive to convert their short-term rental to long-term rental. So I would be open to a conversation if somebody wanted to match my four fifty K on my unit, um, I would probably do that, but, um, I understand there have been efforts in affordable housing, with that, I think comes a whole other issue, um, I also do not like people telling you what to do with your property, but what's what tears into it. Yeah, that's all I have to say, and I'm on color road, it is for all. The grandfathering rule, I think, particularly interesting, what that's going to create for me, sales would be, um, certain properties that have a higher or better value, right? So that's something we'll have to. There, thank you.
Thank you. Blue shirt in the second row here, ma'am?
Way to have, um, a little mask, but I have a couple condos, one in the village, one at, uh, Riverfront. And when it comes to grandfather clauses, can you define that a little bit better? It seems to be at least a clawback, if you, if taking more than, more than thirty-day rental, is there, is there anything else, like sale of the property, like trigger that as well?
I got to look for the grandfather, give me a second.
It doesn't, it doesn't really say.
It's pre-existing.
Yeah, if you, if you rent it up, if you don't rent it in short-term, you put a rent in there more than a hundred and ninety days, your grandfather will laugh.
But is there any other, are there any other drawbacks, like, put the sale of the unit, trigger it, or does it stay with?
The, you should stay with the property.
In perpetuity?
As long as it's registered, sorry.
In perpetuity?
In perpetuity, that's the interpretation we have at the moment.
How much are permits?
Right, as long as they're registered, right, if you let your registration lapse, then it goes away.
And, and just to echo what Joe had said earlier, it's about two hundred and forty units in the village, and it's probably three or four year-round residents over it. Riverfront, there's about a hundred and twenty-six units, and there's probably three or four full-time. So when it, when it comes to just blanket rural residential zone restriction, what about, before you pass that, what about like some type of overlay district, which just deals with where the supposed problems are, because I think the problems are coming from the village, Clearbrook, Coolidge.
Again, again, this. We, planning board hasn't talked about any of this, this is the broader selectmen that has asked us to hold the hearing on it. I'm sorry. Oh, if he's in the audience, if he wants to address some of the comments, he's seated.
Yeah, I, I can hear you, I can wait till a- after the, the public gets to speak, when the planning board goes back into session to address some of the.
Okay.
There's people, Jim, just, you know, there's several people on Zoom with their hands up that want to speak also.
Okay. Okay. Black shirt?
Wanted to follow up, uh, specifically.
Thank you, please.
Yeah.
My name is Michelle Loato, um, I am one of the, maybe four permanent residents of the village. Uh, my, my family's on the property since I stayed here, um, and I became a permanent resident of one of the, um, April of last year. Um, wanted to specifically address the comments about the proliferation of issues due to rentals because of Airbnb. Uh, I'm a data point of one, this is very anecdotal, but this is my family's rental book, um, from nineteen ninety-seven um, through two thousand and one, we no longer rent the property, we haven't since the early two thousands. I don't have any plans to, um, but I am not in support of the ordinance. Um, this is a property right that the village, at least to my knowledge, has had for over thirty years. Um, was also, to my knowledge, created as, um, time shares for a lot of the properties. Um, you know, and has, as someone who has taken advantage of Lincoln as a destination, that's brought me a lot of joy, and I turned into my permanent residence due to that. Um, it's something that I believe is a property right that we should continue to have.
I see a few on Zooms, let's see, uh, Jordan C., like to speak?
Yes, hello, my name is Jordan Cohen, um, I'm an employee of, uh, Loon Mountain. And I just wanted to, uh, speak a little bit to the, uh, issue of, uh, availability of housing for employees of Loon. Um, when I was, uh, when I first started working at Loon, it was, uh, exceedingly difficult to find housing, and it is still pretty impossible. I'm not living in Lincoln at the moment, I have to be in North Woodstock, and the way I got that house was through a miracle. But, um, what I just want to say is that, you know, I'm not, I personally don't want you guys to run your rentals into the ground, sorry, run your. Hello?
Hold on again, Jordan, go ahead.
Okay, huh, sorry, uh, so I don't want you guys to like be running Airbnbs into the ground, but that is exactly what is going to happen if affordable housing is ignored, because if Loon cannot hire employees, there is going to be serious economic downturn in the community, and I re- I for one, really don't want that to happen. Um, that's really all I have to say on the matter, apart from the fact that like, e- even though the board has not received complaints, if you talk to any Loon employee, they will tell you the same thing. All right, I've seen my minutes, however, I do have another, uh, resident that would like to speak. Oh, I do not have another resident that would like to speak, but, um, finding housing for important roles in the community such as first responders, that is fire, police, and, uh, EMS is also impossible, we have first responders that cannot live in Lincoln, and it makes their job a lot harder, that, considering that they have to drive uh, to where they need to be, um, and I think that at least implementing some measures to limit the amount of Airbnbs and to promote the, uh, construction or renting of longer-term rentals is something that is desperately needed. It is very frustrating as a Loon employee and a local to see that there are tons of houses that we can't rent in, because the, the landlords are in favor of short-term rentals, because they want to make that bag in a short amount of time, but I'm telling you, it's not going to be there if we keep going at the same rate that we're currently going. Thank you, I've seen my minutes.
Thank you. One more from Zoom, uh, Tom and Lico?
Hi, thank you for allowing me to address, uh, the board and, um, and the town, um, can you hear me?
Check your, see your name for the record.
Dominic Lico, I live, uh, at the village of, I, I own at the village of Loon on, um, Big Rock Road, thank you. Um, so I, I hear what Jordan said and also, uh, what OJ had, had started the conversation uh, with, and I, and I, I truly do, uh, think that those are, are issues um, that need to be addressed, and I, and I recognize that those are some of the reasons why the selectmen may have, have, have pushed for this, I, I will just say this though, um, being in the village of Loon and based on where some of the restrictions are in some of the zones, it does not seem as though it is equitable where there are similarly situated, uh, associations in some zones that are, that will be allowed to have short-term rentals versus longstanding, uh, associations like the village of Loon that have traditionally been in this space, uh, that have really been a fabric of the community, OJ talked about a community um, and, and establishing that, I think those that have been at these, uh, particular, um, uh, properties and have owned for many, many years feel a, a part of that too, uh, and want to see that, and I just feel as though it's not an equitable distribution of, um, uh, in terms of, uh, who can, um, have short-term rentals in certain areas and, and certain areas that are, that are, that cannot only because of where they're situated and has nothing to do with, with anything else, so that's, that's all I had to say.
Your audience, anyone else? Say, command what your name?
Uh, my name's Margarita, and I live on Pleasant Street, so, um, I'm not necessarily for the ordinance as it stands, but I like that it's a step, I think it's great, kind of, we're headed in a nice trajectory. It's a complex problem, and it's probably going to take a complex solution. And, but I think it really comes down to one simple question, what type of town do you want to live in in the future? Because like the trajectory we're going, there's not going to be people here to live. So if there's not people, there's not kids, to go to the childcare center, to go to the schools, to go to the rec department, so all these structures are probably. To go to the rec department, so all these structures are probably to close just because we won't have people here to go to those things. So then it's really like. Do you want to live in a hollow town? Do you want to live in a town where it's only filled with people on the weekends during vacation time, or do you actually want kind of a heart of a town? So I don't know where, like, how we can define this to be better for everyone, but I think there's probably some common ground that we have to seek out.
Okay, thank you. Please?
Yeah, so I'm. Basically, what I'm I'm glad to get a little. Get a little bit more. Piece of property on multi farm road. What I'm hearing, I guess, is that. The the selectmen feel as though this is going to lower property values enough so that a Loon employee might be able to afford a house. That that's just asinine. I mean, and and. Let's say you get property valued down by forty percent. Who do you think's going to buy the houses? Yeah. Like, come on, let's be realistic. And. The grocery store boy never going to be able to afford it. That's just not how the world works. And you're just, you're you're, I work with these Airbnb people every day. Like, it's what I do, I remodel condos, I do additions, houses, whatever. Ninety percent of them. Are. People working two nine to five jobs with two and a half children, come up here eight weeks a year. And they afford their house by having Airbnb in them when they're not there. You you're you're taking this. Opportunity away from anybody who makes less than five hundred thousand dollars a year. Those people that that are getting by on two hundred thousand dollars a year in Massachusetts, because that's not a lot of money there. And driving a ten year old minivan and bringing their kids up here on the weekend. Renting it when they're not there, you, how can you do that to those people? You know, or just even you, I I understand it's grandbab, but you're taking that opportunity away from everyone in the future. And and the village of Loon. Coolidge Falls, Clearbrook, Ram's Horn, all that stuff. Has never been the heart of our community, Forest Ridge, like people don't live there. That's not what this is. Uh, I mean, I I get it, you want to, you want to take. The mill houses. Make those non-Airbnb. Whatever. But it 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 is incredibly. Unfair, especially to the people, like, and I I I know quite a few people now. Who. Airbnb in their house is part of their retirement plan. You know, it may not be right now, but in five years, that's their retirement plan. Like, what are you gonna think, and for what? You think you're going to drive property values down and up so that so a Loon employee can afford a house? Absolutely not. And it's not going to be a Loon employee buying it. And then, I mean, this is a, this is. Not a solution. To a real problem that we have, it's a feel good measure based on absolute. Nothingness. If it's going to go nowhere. It's going to fix nothing and it's going to stagnate anything, but we'll all be like sitting around waiting for eight years to see if maybe something gets better. That's not the answer. And and there's no. There's there's no data to back up any of it. It's just something someone came up with, they're like, oh, there's not enough houses. Well, let's limit what people can do with their houses then. You know, a a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar mortgage is forty grand a year after taxes. No Loon employee can afford that. The only people in town who can afford that are cleaning Airbnbs. Like, look, come on. They're working on them and they're cleaning them, that's what it is. That is the economy of the town. Like, it it's, and you're not, you're you're taking it away from. Obviously, all people who are employed by this are just creating short term rentals right now, which is a a good part of the community. That can afford to live here. And you're taking it away. From. The the families that are just scraping by with their Airbnbs. And 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 spending their summers up here with their children. You you're, no, no one can do that ever again. This is, this is asinine. And it's not going to actually fix the problem that it's intended to address. Like, it it's just not. We all know that. And and let's talk about the other eight hundred thousand gorillas. Do you want to rent to a bunch of ski instructors from Loon? And no, no one wants to say that.
Vicki.
Yeah, I I.
Jay, Jay needs the record, please.
Oh, sorry, um, I'm Vicki Martin, I live on Pollard Road, um, I'm a full time resident. So I have a comment and then three specific questions, so um. The first comment is, I I sort of, I'm very much opposed to this um. This proposal that the select board's put forward. You know, I think, I understand that there's a lot of concern about affordable housing in town, I don't think this is the way to address it. The other thing that I think is, this this proposal intentionally devalues a lot of people's property. So if you're not in in mountain residential across from South Mountain where you're not in Village Center. Then you're excluded from being able to Airbnb your house and that drives those property values down. So we're talking really hypothetically about people who want to be able to afford to live in Lincoln and are not going to be able to afford it in Lincoln no matter what we do. And we're completely ignoring the people who already own property in Lincoln and. Are actually going to see our property values significantly degrade because. We're not allowed to Airbnb our house and when we sell it, the people that buy it are not going to be allowed to Airbnb it. I mean, I'm not looking to Airbnb my house or sell my house anytime soon, but someday, when we do become a shallow of a town because our select board has not adequately. And our whole town is not adequately, adequately assessed and addressed our affordable housing issue. And I want to sell my house to get out of here, it's it's worth a lot less and. You're you're, so you're taking, you know, two specific areas and you're allowing those to do this and then the property values are worth more. And then a huge swath of town, you're driving down their property values and right in the stated goals of this proposal, I don't know what we're calling it. It says that we're looking to protect people's property values. I'm interested to know whose property values we're trying to protect. Are we trying to protect South Mountain and Village Center because that's the only people we're actually doing some favor of? Are we looking to protect the people who are already running Airbnb's? Because they will be grandfathered and continue to allow it on Air. So, you know, I think it's incredibly unfair to to widely put this like. This um this thing out saying that. These large areas of town are not going to be allowed to do that, you're really getting in the way of people's ability to, you know, generate income to plan for their retirement. To plan for their children, their kids' education, things like that. And then, you know, I think it's unfortunate that the select were put this forward, but they're not actually here addressing the questions or answering the questions. So specific questions would be, number one, why are you allowing it at South Mountain but nowhere else? You mean, we have condos all over the place that we're not allowing it. And then we're going to say we're going to allow it over at South Mountain, so. Why have we chosen South Mountain to say we're going to allow it and Village Center maybe makes a little bit more sense, but why Village Center? The second question I have is the same as this gentleman, is this something that is in perpetuity? You register your place and then you sell it and make an Airbnb and they sell it and they can Airbnb, meaning that the value of your home. Will hold up to you selling it if you're current, currently Airbnbing. Um. And then the third question would be, how is this going to be addressed at some meeting? Is this, is this proposal going to be one of the proposals that people come in earlier in the day and vote on without hearing any discussion? Or any information from other people or public feedback? Or is this going to be one of the proposals that everybody has to sit in town meeting and listen to everybody's perspectives and all the pros and cons? Before making a rash decision, because this is a hot button issue. And a lot of people are upset about the affordability of housing in town and they're going to hear, oh. Oh, they're going to limit Airbnbs, absolutely, I'm going to vote for that, but they don't understand, or they want to see, they don't understand the fact that it's going to drive down the property values. For a lot of the residents who live here full time.
So Jim?
Ball, that is both, that is voted on during the day, right?
Voted on during the day, that's always state statute.
Right. So just answer one of your questions, Vicki, it is. It will only be voted on during the day, there will be town staff, I'm sure, to answer people's questions about it. Um, there, but there'll be no back and forth like there is at at uh town meeting.
So as it stands, is this going to vote at? Voting day at the town? Jim Martin.
We haven't um.
Yeah, and I'm just.
We haven't decided.
That hasn't been determined yet.
Yeah.
Um, the town has. The town's selectmen have have talked to uh and town managers, talked to an attorney. Uh about. What the board of selectmen can do and what. The planning board uh responsibilities are, what they can do. Um, of course, we've got both sides of it, doesn't seem to wash out, so. We're going to have to discuss that.
It's an open question.
Yeah.
In the back, sir?
Yeah, my name is Jack, so I'm a two points here in Lincoln, but I'm not a registered voter. So did both voters be able to vote on this or would be taxpayers?
Just registered voters.
So so just a small amount of registered voters, not people that are paying taxes and own property.
Taxation.
I mean, that's, that's not.
Wouldn't make any sense because the majority don't live here. That's still paying the same amount of taxes and not getting the services, um, we don't live here. We have no say.
Okay, Tammy?
May I, welcome, I'm Tammy, I'm one of the selectmen, I'm. I am here to defend the back of. OJ is the planning board um member.
Tammy speaking as a select.
Represented for the planning board, I'm addressing something itself.
Okay, well, OJ's seated, it's just representative.
And he's already said that he's going to talk after.
Well, well.
I'm president, I can talk to you.
Speak as, I would say you speak as a resident, please.
President, I can speak to.
Yeah.
OJ is willing to address that after the public hearing is over, as far as the representation, uh, taxation about representation, absolutely. If there was something that was like, what could you put about that, I would. There's nothing that anybody.
Be careful with my.
You know, top of one, Tammy.
In Massachusetts, I can't vote in either of the states either, I can't vote in any county for the towns of those states either, I can only vote here to spray them. So. Nothing you can do about that, I apologize.
Let's go back to some of the Zoom people, uh, Rob White, like to speak?
Yes, hello, this is Rob White, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Very good, um. Thank you, everyone, um. Yeah, we we've seen this play out in a few different states, um. I feel like Bill Murray in Groundhog Day, so I don't know whether to throw myself off the clock tower or put a toaster in the bathtub, but anyway. Um, we just saw this play out in uh in Florida, uh, they put it to a vote by referendum, uh, the law was written by some extremists who had all kinds of poison pills in there. Uh, fire code and sprinklers and all kinds of things. Uh, it did pass referendum, but just because it passed a vote doesn't make it legal. Right, so that ordinance in particular, it was in direct conflict with state of Florida as well as the constitution. Uh, it represented illegal taking of property. Right, HOAs can do what they want, but a single family home, you're allowed to lease your house. Right, and the substance use of renting a property for. A year, a month, a week and a weekend is the same. Right? So Airbnb's become kind of the poster child of bad, everyone, everyone wants to say it's, you know, black rock buying of properties or. Every house is sex traffickers and big parties and and that's just not true, for for every example. Where you have a negative situation, there were ninety nine other rentals that night that had no problems at all, right? So the problems, you know, they are outliers, uh. It's occupancy, noise, parking and trash. And we should have regulations on those with fines, with teeth in them. Right? But let's be clear about what we're trying to solve here and that's what we're doing, we're talking about government regulation. Saying what you can or cannot do with your property. Who's allowed to come and go, how many people, what time, you know, and I'm not, I haven't studied yours, but I've I've seen this in other places, right? So let's be clear about what problems we're trying to solve and at the end of the day Airbnb, VRBO, all these things, it's just a search engine. Right, and the previous gentleman, I, I agree, these are not. People, uh, you know, that are trying to make a buck, they're people that want to be in Lincoln and experience the beauty and the nature and the sports. And they want a cash flow free place to do that, right? And they could come up with the down payment of a hundred, hundred fifty, two hundred K. And no matter what you do, if you ban it. It's not going to make it go back to yesteryear, it's not going to make rent go down to fifteen hundred, it's not going to make buy prices go down to two fifty, three hundred. It's just not going to happen, so you know what else would happen? Other people would buy it that have the money that don't need to rent it out and then it's just empty. And when you have empty units, like we see in Marco Island, Florida, it goes from fourteen thousand population. Up to seventy thousand and all those service workers. And the excursions and the retail, they go out of business for the other eight months of the year. Right, so I I agree with the person about economic impact study, like. You know, this brings new money, new investors, weekend travelers, that brings new money, new investment to this town. And we chose to invest in Lincoln exactly because you have it right, you have a single form. With how to get in touch, this is accountability, communication, neighbors need to talk to neighbors. We did not invest in Woodstock because they ban it. And, you know. It's, so you have it right, but I'd say let's do things in small bites, let's not go straight to ban for two thirds of the town or, you know, whatever that map says. Right, the the problems are not difficult. And if the town wants to do something to help, it's a supply side and that's the real estate situation, it's always been a supply side problem for ten years. Right, so why don't you give some capital gains, you know. Advantages, tax rights to developers, get some apartments where it's not a bidding war for units, right? Apartment buildings are rent, right? Those aren't bidding wars, so I'd say absolutely, we need affordable housing, but this is not the way to do it, to choke off your your cash flow. Of, you know, travelers, vacationers and and new investors, but no matter what happens, I'd say, you know, again, watching in Florida. It divided the community right down the middle, so I would say in a process, do not put this to a vote. Come up with a team, uh, working committee with representations from all sides. Partner with your successful vacation rental owners. Uh, we know policies that work, I put camera on my front door, I've got noise aware, I know exactly who's coming and going. I have my own rental contract, I don't rely on Airbnb and VRBO, I have very strict security deposits, so I've got teeth of my guests and I can force compliance. To find how I can kick them out and evict them if they're not compliant, so again, the the outlier negative impacts, those are easy to manage. This isn't going to solve the housing problem, but no matter what we do, I would recommend not a vote, a working committee, we need leadership. Um, and um, you know, let's work together because there are solutions, thank you.
Thank you. All right, one more from Zoom, my time is iPhone. You'd like to speak?
Hi, this is Tanya Stasio, sorry, um.
Say your name again, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Oh, hi, this is Tanya Stasio, um. I'm actually a a full time resident of the village of Loon, um, I'm dealing with some medical issues, so I'm in Maine right now, uh, but. I do rent uh short term in the summer because typically I spend most of the year working, working from Lincoln, but I do like to rent um in the summer and just to. Kind of. Add to, um, sorry, I I had a really bad concussion, so it's kind of hard for me to speak, but. I um, I just wanted to say that even if the short term rental was revoked for for a full time residence or any property owner in Lincoln, it it's definitely not going to solve the housing problem because. I wouldn't even rent long term. Because I only rent short term anyway, so there's no option for me to rent long term as I live there full time, so I don't think this is going to solve the property issue. Um, or the housing issue. Um, second of all, the village already has a timeshare, so it's literally would be a street away, I'm on Fox Run and. You know, just around the corner, they'd be having timeshares and access to like transient um renters, so it wouldn't solve that problem either as we're in the same exact. Community, um. So I I I'm on, I'm actually on another call, but I just wanted to to kind of say that I I am opposed to this. Um, just because I I do live there, I do want the opportunity, I don't have kids yet, but if I did have kids, I'd want the opportunity to, you know, possibly rent mine. And then, you know, buy larger house in Lincoln, I I love Lincoln and it's been a part of my childhood. Um, you know, I was lucky enough to be able to move there when I was able to afford a house, so. Um, I am in favor of, you know, not putting this ordinance in place as of right now. And then I wanted a little bit more detail on the grandfathered, so if, you know, if I am registered now for short term rentals. Would that, would that go along with my property or with me if I were to buy another place, would that property still be able to rent out for sale, um? And then, uh, I guess one other suggestion is if we are renting through Airbnb or, you know, VRBO or anything like that, I mean. We could put a fee in there to give back to the town, like, okay, X amount of dollars goes to the school system or to the sidewalks or to clean up trash, like. I wouldn't be opposed to something like that either, where there there would be some benefit to the town with with some of the rental fees as well.
Thank you. Back to the audience. Sir, what's your name?
I'm Adam, I live on Main Street, present full time, um, fortunately.
I'm Adam. I live on Main Street, present full-time. Um, fortunately, everybody's concerned about.
You have to speak a little louder, yeah.
Power?
Yeah.
Uh, there's a lot of people concerned about the housing shortage. When's the last time there's been a study about the housing shortage? And if there has been, what has the town of Lincoln done about it?
What can we do about it? We don't have the land.
Well, I think you invited ahead, and, uh, there was not one person that spoke a favor. Twice, twice.
They found land to build new police station and, and fire station.
Voters put that in, thanks. Tammy?
I just, twice now, the, the selectmen have tried to address workforce housing on the land of police stations going on now and other town on pieces of property and more people than are in this room now. Pretty much yelled at us and said, we, we're all for workforce housing, just not in our backyard. And, and they were very adamant that that not have it in Lincoln. Lincoln is not the place for that. I mean, we're told that the, the selectmen have to do something. Every time we bring something, we're told, no, not that. That's a norm, we have that.
Sir? We'll not provide housing for them.
Go to the topic this meeting. Please.
I want to raise the minimum wage down to forty bucks now.
Couldn't they run it tall without anyone taking any action?
Yeah, and the likelihood of no control of it.
I don't think they do it all over the country. Hey, make their own win. But I mean, how low do you want to drive people's property value to make it affordable? What is affordable?
Affordable was the ninety-seven when I bought my house.
Right, like, I mean, three, three hundred thousand dollars doesn't exist in Lincoln.
Not anymore.
It's not going to. But if you move to New York City, you're not moving to, to Manhattan. It's not happening. That's just how the world works. Like you have certain zip codes that are desirable and you have, I mean, it's just what it is.
I have.
Why you watch it?
No, let's talk to please. Are you all done?
Uh, just two more quick comments and one comment sort of question. So looking at the way, let me move back up. If this passes, there will be litigation. There is no question about, right? And you saw it in North Conway, you've seen it all over the state, we would get, as the town planned it was the hundreds of thousands of dollars, even if you have a local attorney, the hundreds of thousands of dollars that you take to defendants. So that's probably more of a rhetorical question, even just looking at, even to think. There've been a lot of questions about whether that survives the selling of the house. I would say it's the favor, right? Right on that issue alone, there's going to be litigation, right? Let alone all the sort of the policy issues and the takings clauses and due process and all of the stuff that can be, that can be done. So that's the first comment. The other comment is just echoed what you said or I read it, is that your thing? Yeah. Um, back when I bought the property in Coolish Falls, right, right as I bought it, they, uh, they, there was a, an amendment to try to within the HOA to ban short-term rentals. There was a lot of activity around this, right? I was one of the people heavily involved. Um, you know, these are complex issues, as you said, right? This bill is sort of like using a cannon to try to kill a flock, right? I mean, if I would rest the individual issues, pardon is a problem, address the pardon. If they're, you know, address the individual issues rather than just doing something like this that's going to cause litigation. It's going to cause all these issues, right? Have some studies, look at the actual issues, try to do a little bit more incrementally to address the individual problems that come up rather than just being, because it does, I mean, this is a town that thrives on tourism, right? You know, you look at, just take the New Hampton Inn, right? Three hundred dollars a night for a Hampton Inn. When I can, you can rent my five-bedroom house for four hundred, five hundred maybe, right? There's a lot, that enables a lot of people to come up here that otherwise couldn't, right? And I don't think I have that luxurious of, of placement. Hampton Inn going for three, four hundred dollars a night. I mean, that's, that's just out of the range of a lot of people. So these Airbnb properties do help bring a lot more tourism and money and economics to the, to the.
Any else in the audience at the moment?
I got one more question.
Yes, please go ahead.
Are you guys aware that there's currently a bill in New Hampshire Legislature to ban towns from doing this?
I, I have a little, a little bit of information, I haven't followed, but I know there's a number of bills being proposed. I mean, a lot of bills proposed, they don't go into that.
I'm sorry, a bill in New Hampshire to ban what?
To stop towns from making laws like this, that they're unfair.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, Michael Najjar, you have your hand up?
Thank you. Yeah, it took me a while to figure out how to put that little yellow hand up there.
Sir, say your name for the record, please.
Sure. Michael Najjar. My wife and I have had a condo in the, the village of the Loon Mountain, the Loon Village Homeowners Association for twenty-five years. We've never rented, never, not one day. Now I'm, I, I get this thing a few days ago, which was not a lot of warning. I did submit a letter with a lot of points. I'm not gonna go through it all. I hope it's in, I hope it's in the record. It'll be part of the rec. I, I'm now, as I'm listening, I'm thinking, gee, maybe I should be in favor because we've never rented and I don't wanna rent it. And if I'm going to see a forty percent drop in the valuation of my property and that's gonna be reflected in my tax bill, which it ought to be because the assessment will have to be lower because I, because I won't register to keep short-term rentals that I've never had. Um, gee, that's good. Maybe, maybe I want this after all. I was going to say oppose. I actually have a couple of questions. One is, what do the police say? Where do the police see problems? Do we have anything? What locations are the police being called to, to deal with problems because of the behavior of short-term renters? Is, is there anything on that at all?
Yeah, we have nothing to do with that.
Uh, so, so there isn't really a problem there. Where is village center zoning? Like Church Street in the area up there where the church is and behind the hardware store and all that? What's, what zoning area is that in?
Uh, that's, uh, Village Residential and then south of the school, north of the school is Village Residential. South of the school is General Residential.
So those are still areas, because I was kinda surprised, I mean, so much of the town is within a rural residential zoning. Um, and I was just curious that, uh, you would think if you're going to really try to a, a, address this in a way that makes any housing more affordable for people that wanna stay in, in the town. It would be to change the zoning a, and have no short-term rentals available in the areas right in the town. While you're going out to the outskirts, um, like where I am, uh, Coolish Falls and all that, I, I don't know what you're accompli, I, I think you may be accomplishing the exact opposite. If, for example, if you look at five point eight and it says if you, if you rent for a long-term over a hundred ninety days, even though you've kept your little registration and all that up for short-term rentals, what happens? You lose your grandfather. That's the end of it. And that is a significant problem, particularly, and I, I think in my own situation, at some point I will die. Somebody's gonna get that unit. I don't want them to, to have a forty percent drop in valuation because my neighbor that kept the registration up and kept doing short-term rentals, uh, that, that unit obviously is worth more than mine. It can no longer be used for short-term rent. So you're, you're kind of encouraging, you know, if I actually go and register, I'm gonna start thinking, well, maybe I ought to start doing it. And I'll never go with a long-term rental, eh, once I've registered and then be non-grandfather. It doesn't really make sense. Beyond all that, you know, if, if you were enforced, um, well, enforcement is a real problem. If the real goal is to lower the value of properties, I hate to say it, I remember we got questionnaires, uh, several years ago, do you wanna see more of this in Lincoln? Do you wanna see more of that in Lincoln? My wife and I wrote back, we don't wanna see any of that. If we did, we'd have already bought in North Conway. Well, now you've already got what you wanted and it's a little late. So I don't know that, I, I don't see how this solves anything. All you're doing is setting up conflict between, well, you may get some more revenue because people will register just to keep the option open so that their property value doesn't plummet. If they don't register, the value plummets. And it better be reflected in the tax bill or you're gonna see fights every time you get an assessment that doesn't reflect that reduction. This is really, I, I hate to say, there, there are legal issues. There's eminent domain because you're really taking away a big chunk of value of the property by doing this. Um, plus there's the issue that, that North, you know, the Supreme Court already ruled in North Conway about this is residential use and you're, you're, you're not gonna define it otherwise to try to do it essentially as spot zoning or individualized zoning for individualized properties. That's all. Thank you.
Maybe one more. I don't think, let me just, please, I'm just.
Um, twenty-seven dash four.
Hi.
What's your name?
My name is Bob Fury. I live at twenty-seven four Winter Way and have been a winter resident of this town uh, for the last forty years and watched it grow and change. And I appreciate the fact that some of the people who do work at the mountain can no longer find places to live. It, back when we started, the mountain supplied housing for all the people and we might put pressure on them to do that. But I wanna talk about what I'm hearing, and I believe I hear that most of the objections to the proposal come from people who have homeowners associations. And I would suggest that this proposal might be much more palatable and in fact might, um, be less problematic if none of the associations, none of the areas that have homeowners associations are affected by this proposed regulation. In other words, if we have a homeowners association with a particular section, whether it be, um, up at the mountain, whether it be, uh, closer to town, that they simply be exempted from this proposal. Because we're never going to be able to change the, the, the values and the costs of living in these associations that would make that low enough to allow people who work at the mountain to live there. But what we can do is to eliminate the objections to this coming from those associations. And then look at ways to solve the problems that you're talking about because those problems are in fact real. They're real. And in my eighty years, I have actually been up to Lincoln, um, seventy-five of them every year. So I'm quite familiar with the changes and I'd like to find a way to help keep the essence of Lincoln intact. And. I, did I get cut off here? What's happened?
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, any, anyway, my suggestion is change the proposal so that you exempt every area that has a homeowners association. Exempt them from the proposed regulations. That's it.
Thank you.
Spot zone. That's spot zoning?
Yeah. Any else from the audience? Please.
Can I, I'd, I'd be ready to speak if, if no one there is looking to speak.
Um, we got a couple more in the audience and get to the floor, back to the beginning.
Got it.
We're not talking about lowering property values for, for, where people who work in town, it's not gonna happen. We're talking about raising the value of others. This isn't going to make things more important, it's going to make other things more expensive. That's all it is.
Say your name for the record. Uh, Blair Whedon, uh, I'm closely up one minute ago. I'm just gonna be carrying a team, I'm like. I don't think it's moving forward at all. Um, I don't think the town would have the right to tell anybody their personal property, whether they rent it out or not, personally. You know, I look at my, I live in town, I work in town, I'll be able to live the rest of my life, but I would like to often maybe in ten, fifteen years, whatever, to say, oh, maybe I wanna be a silver, go to Florida, play golf. Uh, but I won't have that off. With this moving forward. Yeah, and then my next question is, does, what happens? Does, if this moves forward, does, does everyone just go out this week and everybody in town registers their, their rental? So in twenty years, you can say, alright, I guess I can rent it out.
Right now, it's one day every six months.
One day every, I'll rent it, you rent it. I, again, I think this is trying to address something, I, everything, everything, you're not driving down the, the price of the houses. You're just, you, you're shifting what, what properties have more value at this time. So all you're doing is you're just limiting, you're, you're making, you're limiting capability, take some more. All you're doing. It's not gonna provide more housing for people that wanna move to town. People that are moving to town, buying properties, because people in one area are, are. People that wanna move to town to be employed, think we really need to downlook and maybe the town needs to talk to the people and start having conversations like this, going and saying, you know, making it sense for companies that are required to, 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 hey, we give you huge tax, you get whatever, however it works or it looks like. Build some new in town so that on outskirts of town, maybe the town can, uh, you know, plan that so that we can get some. The white lives there. And that way, what's gonna happen is, right, everyone's gonna buy these properties, take everybody's rentals away. I, you know, I look at my neighbor, rents his property. And midweek, it's rented out all midweek during the summer and all winter. You think that people just come up on the weekends, but they don't, not midweek. So if you take every, and those guys are going to go up to the mountains and they're going to go into the restaurants and buy our stocks in town. And if you take away everybody's sport car rental, then it's just gonna be homeowners coming up on the weekend. The town's gonna have six, eight thousand extra people on the weekend. So all the business will be busy then, but they're not gonna be busy as they would be if you had to. Mike, thank you.
Thank you. Hi.
I'm worried. But, um, you're right, we're developers and keep ours, so we, uh, that's, we're, we're. And that's exactly what happened. So I come, went in and made everybody register and VRBO, do the taxes. And now my ice cream shop is open for the last year. These place is, is dead. I mean, it opens four days a week. I mean, we, we have, we're not rent. We go through our, we live in a little community, regular walls, um, very small. You go through, I would say it's seventy percent of the lights are off. So that's what you're gonna run into. Um, our kids went to school down the street in Lincoln and, and with us, and we love Loon, we love, we love here. It's just a shame that if you're gonna do that, you guys don't realize what you're gonna lose. You really don't. I mean, it's, it's incredible what our little town in Born.
Ma'am?
Right, Jane. Yeah, we're developers too. So we also, we developed, I'm sorry, what? Um, when we developed, we were brought before the town of, uh, Born, and we have to put in housing for our people that weren't there.
Good idea.
Like she said, what we did in our town is instead of having this, we had like a little group informal meeting where we have little groups of people, maybe ten in a cluster, and everybody had their opinions. And then one person in the cluster came together and they all had their opinions and it really worked well. Because we need town, we need the developers to bring housing. So out of, you know, instead of doing a forty B, which is, um, housing for, or lower income, I should say for, lower income. We didn't do that. What we did is the developers put in housing so that the kids could afford it. The teachers, you know, providers and stuff like that. But we do need people, even if they don't live there, like, I don't think they're, but I'm here a lot. So, um, you know, we need our community to, you know, not, you know, there to vote.
I lost for about half my thought, but. Say your name for the record, please. I've been serving. I've never heard that before.
I've never heard that before. Jamie, hi. But, um, I mean, I've been serving in the, what, what is your name? The rest of it? Jamie, that's. I've been serving in this town for over twenty-five years. We are, we used to be, you know, a free season town now. We're like a four and a half season town. So we don't think it ever gets to that point where, you know, the town is shunned down, is to be closing and all that. I think we would survive. And I actually added like, I thought in my Facebook post, you know, we survived fine twenty-five years ago, like, and it was still busy. It's just God was so busy and there has to be something in the middle that we can figure out. Maybe this is the answer, maybe it isn't. I think employee housing is a great idea, but I don't think that you should have to know what your job is gonna be before you move to town. I don't think me living in town should be dependent if I'm working for a certain company. I think you should be able to move to town and figure it out from there. That's it.
Thank you.
Steven Simzowski, sorry.
Hi. Yeah, this, this is Steven Simzowski. I have owned in Forest Ridge since two thousand and seven. And I, I guess I have more of a question and it is, you know, relative to process now. So this article proposal as it is, it sits with the planning board, I understand. And are the next steps, then the planning board has to either recommend it, amend it, or recommend against it? Is that how this process works? And if so, you know, what is the, um, what, how, what is, how would that proceed? How are amendment to this proposal proceed before it goes to town meeting? Thank you.
We make a substantial change tonight. We have to have another hearing.
Well, so to clarify though, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, did I cut someone off? He was answering that?
We can say question and answer.
I, I guess I'm trying to understand that if, you know, if, if the planning board does nothing, then this goes to town meeting as it is. Is that statement correct?
Maybe.
We're, we're not really, probably, but we're not really a hundred percent sure.
Okay. Cause I think what I, what I would suggest or hope is that the people who have weighed in on this, um, would have some channel to make proposals to amend it before it goes to town meeting. And I'd like to understand, you know, what that, what that process is.
We've taken public comment. That's a reason to have a hearing and then we're gonna discuss it amongst ourselves and make a decision after we close a public comment.
Okay. So it sits with the planning board to kind of assess and digest everything we've talked about today or, and, and make that, make the next step.
Carol, the groupie hand up?
Um, yes, I, I thought the, so maybe you don't agree with the advice that you got from.
He didn't have, we didn't get any advice. He kind of split the difference. Tammy?
May I read that difference we're talking about? The, the section, well.
I don't have it. Is it in the packets?
Well, there's, depending on what you made for decision making, what it says pretty much is it's a select board article. If the planning board amends it, it becomes a planning board article, then you must support it. Okay. So we're not gonna support it. It has to remain a select board article.
Question. We can amend, we can amend the language.
If we come to a planning board article, we get the right to reject it, don't we?
Well, let's, you know, let's keep the public comment open and we can discuss. Would anyone else like to speak?
Okay.
Can I hear somebody?
I'll speak.
Are you gonna speak as planning board member?
Yes.
Let's close public comment at the moment.
Make sure everybody's up.
Is it, would anyone else like to speak?
Yeah, just one quick question. Um, if you do make, if the planning board does make a change, if the planning board make a change basically saying short term rentals are allowed, period? And that's, assuming you support that, could you make a change like that and then vote and then that would become the proposed ordinance?
We believe we could, but that's, you know, the subject, subject for debate. It's unclear at the moment. Like I said, this is not, hasn't been proposed by the. Motion to close public comment? Oh, someone else? Susan?
We can't hear her at all.
I own a house on Maple Street and I'm in this long term, not a yellow, but all, you know, the community, that's what they think. I'm married, they're all in rural residential. Main, because of work, I think rural residential could be in the loud zone. Home, I mean, so we, without, I mean, perfect made for second homes and second home. If you, you know, if you have the ability to change this proposed ordinance, I would, you know, change that zone to be one that's allowed. I would also like to see more clarity in the grandfathering. It doesn't say whether it runs with the property or the owner. It also doesn't say of if you get a short term license, but you don't rent. Is that an option? Is there a timeline on that? I mean, you guys are talking about, well, if it's, we have to rent it to your job. It's not gonna say that. Well, you're not playing. It's, it's just. Says you can't rent longer than a hundred nights. So you can't have a seasonal that stays a couple days too long, but if you don't. We're under much of the ordinance on the Blackboard side, because a lot of it is what the select board has put together a couple of years ago. A lot of our homeowners, some of which have spoken today already. So a lot of it I'm used to, but, you know, we only collect the contact info from the person that's in the community. It's easy, I couldn't forget from an Airbnb, but we call them. But certainly there's no need to collect the entire family's contact info. And I don't know if that wording just needs to be fine tuned. Well, if you just need to leasehold it or whoever, the person signing the lease contacting, but for that. Well, that's it.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anyone else in the audience like to speak?
I just have a process question. So if you guys take the article, does it then become something that gets discussed at town meeting?
It gets voted on during the day.
So no matter what, it'll be going to the.
So I guess if someone's vehemently opposed or in favor, they need lobby their, so to speak. Carol?
Um, if they make a change, a proposed change, then there'll be a second public hearing in two weeks. So it'll be a second.
It's a regular planning board meeting, but we'll add this, we'll add this to the agenda in the event there's a change for it. Put your name again.
If you did, the article did make it to the town vote, which Massachusetts, so may I have a word something? And does the planning board make a recommendation that goes on the ballot that says these are the pros and the cons with, or if, and this is why, is that, is that get, that language get in there?
I mean, it doesn't get on it, but you could say that as recommended by the planning board.
But that's it.
Right. I mean, you know, the staff will have information to, available to the voters.
But, but it doesn't make it on the ballot.
No. Someone on Zoom like to speak? All right. Is there a motion to close public comment?
So.
Second, one favor. Aye, and Joe seconded it. Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What do you, the board member like to speak?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Joe.
On this ordinance. When people bring in housing, fly back, say you can bring in housing for people, employees. When you bring in a development, you, you require fifteen, twenty people in, like a rental town or a restaurant on your own. You expect the town to take care of your problem for you. You just put up housing for your employees you're bringing in. Not expect the townspeople to subsidize them. And when you take your money, you leave. That's what happens to a lot of businesses. They make the, they raise the town any money to get, make the town pay for your housing, then they leave town and collect their profit. Secondly, we had a change, we have, we could, have been, I have brought up several times in the past fifteen to twenty, twenty-five years, but housing regulations, the town implement for developers gives them more density in their property. They can put in certain restrictions. They can be only for employees, the town residents, et cetera, et cetera. Municipal employees, that is ambulance, fire, police, personnel, whatever. But if they buy one, they'll be using, they have linoleum floors that are high right cover. They'll have pine trim instead of oak or mahogany. The status outside is exactly the same. But I haven't put down this many times. I don't even bring it up anymore. This is, you get all the information from the Hampshire Housing Authority. So, Mr. Municipal.
New Hampshire Municipal Association.
The, the municipal association. Dan Green, who's here with us, Northern Council told me about this. They went down, settled their meat, brought it in, proposed it, and everybody shut me down. Now, as, like one that had came to town some years ago, they wanted to give them, pretty much give the land. They wanted free water, still hook up. Tim's at this guy for twenty years. The taxes, I don't get that. I've been here all my life. Why is it sometimes people come in, I don't even know that I can live here? And give them free benefits. I don't, I'm not qualified for. While I'm not qualified, you're not, Jimmy isn't, he's not, we're all residents. Excuse me, that's the point I'm trying to make. And Carol, how much does town charge for a license for Airbnb?
A hundred dollars for one year.
For a year? Uh, so that's about fifty thousand dollars in collective revenue from Airbnbs right now. Where does that money go? You're only allowed to charge so much on any license you put out for town. For the expenditure, for the cost of offering that particular, what, control. Where's that money going to? Is it going to the general conference? Or is it used to control that particular issue? That same law?
It's used to pay for, well, the service that, um, the software and the service that registers.
So that cost is forty-five thousand dollars that software, correct?
It goes into the general fund because it has to be for this budgeting, the budget, I think it was thirty-eight thousand, you know, right around there. Pay for rent a gift after twenty twenty-four. Any money brought in has to go in the general fund and then we have to grow this budget for the expense.
But the dog can't wash anywhere how much you can, how much you can, you can't expend more money than you collect for a certain type of venue.
Not in this set, not in this instance. It has, it's, it's municipal budgeting. We have to grow this budget on our expenses and money brought in will go into the general fund.
Anybody else? Do you want to get more?
No, just say each development should. We have one, or a guy must be in hotel up here by four or three. He was gonna put his buildings in his own for his own employee, not a lot. See anybody else in town doing that? Or over here, one or another development town, he works for the housing for his employees, he comes in. Moon Mountain used to have employees for the housing. That's all destroyed. Remember the honey jar, honey day, honey box house?
Yeah.
That's all totally obliterated. They could sell them land, do it for developers to progress, to bring more money, more money into the town, but not have, have a couple of people working.
Trying to stick with the topic.
It all comes together.
I'd like to hear from OJ.
Okay. OJ, did you want to say something?
Yeah, sure. Um, so first of all, the, the intent of this, uh, ordinance was to allow the, really to allow the townspeople to, to express their thoughts on it. We don't have, um, and I was, we, one of, one of the questions related to this, we don't have major problems with occupancy or noise or traffic or trash. Those, those are not the purpose behind this. Yes, they, they do address those issues. Um, but that's not the real thrust of, of why this ordinance came about. The ordinance came about because the, the downtown area of Lincoln um, is becoming just a big hotel and no longer a community. And we've heard a lot of local people are upset about that, that, that they, they feel like, you know, they walk down the street and it's just, you know, people with suitcases from mass, out of state plates, uh, walking in and out of these houses. And there's no sense of community. Um, and, and along with that goes, again, that we are not able to house, you know, and, 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 uh, people have mentioned, you know, loan employees and the, the, the people that work at the restaurants. Um, we can't affor, uh, provide affordable housing for our own police officers, for our school teachers, uh, for, for general managers of some of these businesses in town, for accountants and bookkeepers. I mean, professional people. It's not just, you know, a dishwasher or, 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 you know, someone who loads the chairlift. Um, they need housing too, but this isn't to address that issue. Um, this is to, to create a sense of community. Um, one of the, uh, 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 additions to this, what you're reading for, for a proposed ordinance, uh, was not voted in by the board. But I'll read to you what we, we, we didn't put into it. And it would be, uh, in addition to section five point eight, talking about grandfathered short-term rentals. And the addition that didn't get voted in by the majority of the board says, additionally, any residential unit that is part of a homeowners association that is registered with the state of New Hampshire, and there is one or more units in that HOA that are currently registered with the town of Lincoln as a short-term rental unit, then all of the units of that HOA will be grandfathered to allow short-term rentals. Um, if the planning board was gonna consider amending this, um, this proposal tonight, that would be the one thing that I would suggest that was discussed because many of the comments came about from, again, things like Clairebrook or the Village of Loon where, okay, what if one is a short-term rental and one isn't? How's that gonna affect property values? Those are all good questions. Um, and, and, you know, my, um, concern is how are we gonna, um, uh, patrol that? That's gonna be difficult. Um, so anyway, I'd say that that's, if, if there's an amendment to come, that would solve a lot of the, uh, uh, arguments that we heard tonight. Um, but again, this, this is not about noise and traffic and trash or whatever. It's, it's really about we're losing a sense of community. We don't have volunteer baseball coaches and, and scout leaders and, and church leaders and school volunteers because we don't have very, living in town. Um, it's, and it's been a problem. So that's it.
So, yes. Yeah, I there's a lot of comments to be made here tonight. First of all, I think that we need to have some legal, the planning board needs to have some legal guidance on what our options are, um, other than the town attorney, because the town attorney's um, advice that he gave us.
That is from the New Hampshire Municipal Association.
But with Jason Dennis also looked at, right?
Yeah, he was in, he was in contact with Municipal Association.
Right. So Jason Dennis is on board with this, but they also said that, um, it can go either way.
Yeah.
Um, so I think, you know, we've listened to a lot of well-thought-out concerns tonight. I, I don't believe that the addition to the ordinance is gonna do anything but pit rural residential against HOAs. Um, there's a lot of people who spoke tonight about having the ability to do what they want with their property. And I think that this affects that. If you go to a lot of cities, small towns, there's a lot of people who live outside of them and they come in and they commit to town to work, whether they're professionals, teachers, policemen, firemen. I mean, you know, they may not be on call. Um, town Lincoln's, as far as the, the professionals that are, um, safety, the, the fire department, maybe going full-time, we're gonna have to at some point in time address that between the fire department and the ambulance crews going full-time. The I do believe that the, um, ordinance has proposed, will devalue the properties. I think we need to take a look at that. I, I'm not sure the town has considered how many properties it's gonna affect and and how many people are gonna be asked for abatements. Um, I know that when I looked at it, when I looked at it, as far as estate planning and stuff like that, you know, I would like my wife to be able to rec, to realize as much value of the property as she can if something happens to me. And, and, and this won't allow that. You know, so there's, we do have in- impact fee ordinances, um, that could address maybe some of the housing shortages. Um, I don't know, the problem with that is that most of these developments have already been approved. So an impact fee ordinance wouldn't, wouldn't help them. Um, I'm not in favor of this ordinance, the way it sets, and I'd like to, I'd like to propose that we be, um,
All right.
That we talk to an attorney first before we make any decisions. Well, just the planning board attorney, I don't want to deal with the town attorney, I think we need our own, so that we can, a- after taking, uh, what people have said, that we can.
It's just, you know.
I know time's short, so we.
Yeah.
But there, there's no urgency to do this, there's no urgency at all. I mean, we, we could put, put this off for a year, and it really wouldn't do anything right away, and.
Well, that would give time for it to be litigated, by other towns to pay the legal fees.
Well, that's true. But I mean, you know, my suggestion would be that we put this thing off, because we've had a lot of people voice concerns and suggestions, and, and maybe, you know, take a look at those. And if they have value and merit, maybe, maybe put together a task force or a committee to look into this. And, and, and see where it goes, we did it with water, you know, we could do the same thing with, with short-term rental ordinance. Um, get, get some people from, uh, associations, get some taxpayers on it, and, and take a look at it, see, you know, see what comes out of it. But, like I said, there's no real rush to do this. I think to rush this doesn't make sense. And I, I don't see, I don't think the planning board should support it, at least knock this ship.
Okay, Steve, do you have something?
Yeah, it's got a bunch of notes, everybody's gone over it under time.
Can't hear you, Steve.
Okay, yeah, long and short, I think it's a bunch of nonsense, I don't think you should leave this room. It's just, I wouldn't waste money on a lawyer, I wouldn't waste any more time talking about it, I think it's done. Inspections and enforcement are, it's, it's a joke around here, I mean, nobody does any of that. How are you gonna take care of all these Airbnbs? Are you gonna make sure everybody gets a hundred bucks, it's beyond me? Um, I, I, I'm ashamed of that, it's just sticking it to the little guy, that's all, that's all it's doing.
Few letters, actually, I forgot to read during the public comments, I'm gonna incorporate my reference into minutes, they'll be attached to the minutes. Letter from Kyle Trulie. Michael Naja, S Y, he's already spoken.
A few dairy. Michael's just, you know, in there twice once from him personally, and then once from the Village of Loon.
Okay, I'm going, I'm going through them, so I've missed any. Michael Naja, S Y, as we talked about that one. Um, few dairy, few dairy, excuse me.
Yeah, that's all we need, so, you know, comment for the town planner, pass to that.
Go ahead. I think, Michael Naja a couple of times, few dairy.
Once for the village.
Okay, once for the, so, okay, so Michael's Naja writing on behalf of the Village Homeowners Association as well.
Right.
Okay. So those will be attached to the minutes and out of the public record, if anyone wants to look at those.
Right, and then there's the Tom and Wendy Tanner.
That's for, those are from Manchin Hill, right? I missed that one.
Oh.
I sorted them out, they're all together.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Let's go through this other panel, I think these are all from the Manchin.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So I have some questions about the actual, how this works. That's why I asked that we have an attorney, I know Steve doesn't wanna spend the money on, but as it sits right now, the Board of Selectmen has the ability to put an ordinance on the ballot to be voted at town meetings during the day. If the, do we know whether the planning board can pull that article or not, just by simply not supporting it? Or, you know.
It's never been, it's never been decided, that's the long and short.
So we need to find that out by an attorney, wh- what we can do and what we can't do. I mean.
Can we just say no?
We, that's my question. Even if we say no, it, it just says we can't support it, but that doesn't mean that, that it's, it's not gonna be supported at town meeting, and it's gonna go through, because no one's gonna be able to discuss it. And that's what, that's what Jimmy was talking about, and, and, I mean, I think there's, there's several things that we need to talk to an attorney about. I mean, one is whether the town ordinances, uh, from association bylaws we talked about tonight, we talked about code requirements, new versus old, if it's gonna go forward. Um, and at town meeting, town staff is there, does town staff support the planning board's position? Or are they gonna support the Board of Selectmen's position? So there's, I mean, there, there's some questions here that we need to answer. Or know the answers to, these people are all waiting to find out, you know, and I don't know if we can give them the answers, I certainly don't have them, do you have them?
Don't know, don't know for sure, I mean, I would say we vote our conscience, and then vote from there.
So do we have the, so my question to you is, do we have the ability to?
It has not been, it has not been decided, for the law, it's, hasn't been adjudicated.
I don't think it's qualified. It says here that after the public hearing, the planning board shall vote, by vote, determine the final form and ordinance, amendment or amendments to be presented to the town or village district, which ordinance or amendment may include editorial revisions, textual modifications resulting from proceedings of that hearing. So, it's, it also says that the planning board may make textual modifications to the proposed amendments. What that tells me is that we can change the wording of this.
Yeah.
If we can change the wording of this, does that become then our orders and, and the, the Board of Selectmen disappear, or? I mean, I need to, it'd be nice to know the answer before you actually take a vote as to how you're gonna.
Well, you know, we didn't have a chance to have a meeting in, in the time when that legal opinion came in, and today, so it's just.
So, so barring that, could, could the, could the Board of Selectmen? And I guess, OJ, you're, you're still on, so would the Board of Selectmen consider postponing this for a year? And not putting it on the, the ballot, so that we could have time to at least digest a little bit more of what we heard tonight? I mean, it's obviously gonna take longer than the time we have before town meeting.
Obviously, I can't speak for the whole board. We have a meeting next Wednesday, and I will certainly update them on, on, well, Tammy, Tammy's there, in, in, at the, in, at the meeting. But we will update Jack on what, uh, took place tonight, and, um, if there's a motion to make any changes, we have the right to do that.
So, so then, in, in that regard, we could have a second, we could.
If you make a substantial change tonight, we're obligated to have a second meeting.
Can, can we post a second public hearing? Due to the fact that the selectmen are gonna meet, and then these, you know, then we can give these people some sort of an answer? Or do we just have to make a textual change tonight automatically, having done this? Well, I was gonna make a textual change tonight, I would say that we, I would agree with Steve that we scrap the whole thing and make that a textual change. Then we can have the meeting, and then the Board of Selectmen can decide whether they wanna go forward with it or not.
Can I make a suggestion to that?
No.
Paul, your, your, your suggestion of making a textual change to scrap the whole thing, um, there's been case law on that previously in New Hampshire, uh, but it was with petitioned articles, not about Board of Selectmen, so it, it, that's up in the air. Um, as to what is legal or not legal, or what a court would see as legal or not legal. The other question you're asking about what happens to this, um, it, it, there's been debate amongst two prominent, uh, uh, municipal lawyers uh, that can't agree, so when you want an answer, the answer's gonna come, if you really want an answer, the answer's gonna come through a court decision that's gonna cost money to whoever brings it. And, um, I, I'm thinking that's not in the best interest of the town. Option one tonight, in my opinion, would be that the, the planning board just vote to not approve this, and it goes before the town not approved. Or two, they adopt a, a, um, amendment to it, like grandfathering, um, the whole homeowners' association. That would be considered a substantial change, but not defeating the whole purpose of the article, that would trigger a hearing next week. In between time, the board will, will meet and may or may not make any decision to, uh, affect this going forward.
Well, are you saying, OJ, that I can make a, I can make a motion to, to get rid of the, where'd it go? To get rid of the part that, um, um, restricts the short-term rental and, and all of the zones, to just delete that from the, uh, current proposal?
I think the.
Your, your proposal's leaving five point seven.
Right, so if I made, if I made a motion to delete five point seven, which allows, which speaks to the allowed zones for short-term rentals, um, that would be enough of a textual change, bring it back for next week, I mean, two weeks?
I'm not a lawyer, but I would consider that a, 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 an amendment that guts the purpose of the, uh, ordinance, and therefore would not be, uh, honored. That would be my reading of it, I'm not a lawyer. But, but you, 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 you're right on that fringe, okay? That amendment would tr- trigger a le- a, a, a legal opinion and court costs.
Well, based on what I see here tonight, I think there's a few people that won't pay the court costs, so. I'll make them up, Jimmy, can I ask a question? We're, we're in the public.
Not in, we're not in public.
Why, why does it come to this, or why didn't you guys go along with the select board when they proposed and discussed it? And a month or so ago, and then you wouldn't be sitting all here waiting to find out what lawyers are gonna be, like, work.
We're elected to make decisions, I mean.
We were against it once. Yeah, you voted against it, but now you're here listening to all this, and everybody's here complaining about it. You could have dealt with it yourselves and, and got away with something.
How would you have dealt with it ourselves when they held Ben putting it off to passing this?
May I ask a question to the board?
You know, with public comment, I mean.
Right, we're all talking about this for us to resolve.
Do we wanna take any more public comment? I'll put it over.
Jim, I'll make, I'll make a motion.
What I had to say, if people want answers.
Jim?
OJ, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we add the following language to section five point eight. Additionally, any residential unit that is part of a homeowner's association that is registered with the state of New Hampshire, and there is one or more units in that homeowner's association that are currently registered with the town of Lincoln as a short-term rental unit, then all of the units of that HOA will be grandfathered to allow short-term rentals.
Okay, zero second. Both of them, big portion, priority zero second. Okay, all right, that motion's failed.
So I'll make a motion that we take out section five point seven.
Okay.
Which speaks to the allowed zones. Which would. So, no, right, so now you're, now, now they're all allowed, because there's no places that, there's no places that they're not allowed.
All of the requirements still apply, no matter what zone you're in.
The, the requirements of short-term rentals would still apply, but short-term rentals would still be, would be allowed in all zones. And, and, and that's the motion I would make. And I will bring it up for legal, we can check with an attorney. Which we're elected to do to represent these people here tonight, and, and it, it stays it for, for this year.
Okay, Steve, your question?
When we just.
Why don't we make a motion, when it's one second in, then we'll have some discussion. Just sort of second, Paul, all right, any discussion? Steve, you wanna say something?
I, I just wanna put it on hold and throw it away, or whatever it takes.
That's what I'm gonna do.
You have to vote.
No, see, take this and take this, and let, select man do this, and bring it to town meeting, that's alone.
But it won't go to town meeting if we do this.
Well, they can bring, they can bring the rest of it to town meeting, signs that section. They choose, if they choose not to challenge it.
It go, right, but what the, it, it, what it does, what it does, that presses the Board of Selectmen to work with the planning board, and it, well, does. We're either gonna get long, we're, we're either gonna get long, or we're not gonna have one. So, this is, this is the way to, to make that, make it work, in my.
Don't, don't forget, that was, that was offered at the start of this process, and the planning board said no, Paul.
That's right.
So now you're trying to force us to talk with you when you said you didn't wanna talk with us, it, it's just kind of a circle here, but.
Hello, Jake. These people here tonight don't like what you presented. We didn't present it, the Board of Selectmen presented it, this is your ordinance, and these people took the time out of their lives to come and say, we don't like it. And you're still trying to ram it down their throat.
That's not true, Paul. Paul, I, I wanted to listen to hear what the people said tonight, and I heard quite well what they said. You didn't even bring this to the people to allow them to talk, Paul, that's it.
No, you didn't, OJ, you didn't listen to, you didn't listen to what all of them said. You listened to some of the ones that have the associations, there were also people here that said that they don't, don't wanna be told what to do with their property.
Don't, don't, don't tell me what I listened to, Paul, don't tell me what I listened to and didn't listen to.
Well.
You wanted to force the selectmen to come and talk to the.
One at a time, who wants to go first?
I made the motion, you got a second.
OJ wants to comment on it, OJ, you want something else?
Nope, I'm good.
Ready to vote?
What was going on, I forgot.
We're gonna, we're gonna take out section, restricts all, all of the, um,
Five point seven.
Five point seven.
We're gonna remove these zones with short-term rentals. And then the, the rest of the regulations will go to the town warrant.
We should remove one point two, not five point seven. Five one seven, we still have all of the technical plans, but if you remove one point two.
Yeah, I love that, I had that, where to go? Too much paper.
Public comment is closed. So at the moment, there's a motion and a second to remove five point seven. Paul has been, uh, signified by saying aye.
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 Can I read?
Aye, can you say aye?
No.
You didn't say aye. Okay.
One question. Mr. Remove just five point seven? I'm gonna remove everything.
Okay.
Well, but that's gonna be on the way.
Hold on, hold on, you can all talk at once, go ahead.
Before we finish voting, make a motion to reopen public discussion, so the attorney can speak.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
I'll make the second, so some people have such wrong opinions.
Yeah.
All right, so we're gonna table discussion, voting on the motion, it's more public comment. Would anyone else like to speak on the motion?
Sure, now again, I'm an attorney, I don't practice this type a lot, I certainly don't represent the town, and certainly know in the form of my client, but there's a standard legal display. If the purpose of this is to, the purpose of the amendment is to try to put this off, right, section one point two says that this, so let me back up. Five point seven just says where short-term rentals are allowed and not. Now, but if they're allowed, all of the rest of this proposed ordinance still apply, all of the parking, all of the inspections, many of the houses here probably have, don't have means to escape out of the windows, because they're too high off of the ground. There's gonna be a lot of things that, that not everyone has probably looked into here. Right, so the point of this is to try to delay things a little bit. But section one point two says, this article shall apply to short-term rentals as defined in section two point one below. And so if you were to remove one point two and two point one, that would basically defeat, you know, all these regulations were still into this, they just wouldn't apply to any short-term rentals. Right, so that would maybe, at least on my quick read of it. Removing that and removing five point seven would probably be a good way to go.
So, your suggestion, uh, one point two?
Yeah, so one point two says this article shall apply to short-term rentals as defined in section two point one below. Right, so if you take out one point two, then this whole article is no longer applying. Yeah, I don't do this type a lot, it seems to kill the whole, the whole bill.
Yeah, but, you know. I'm a literary attorney, because like you said, one attorney reads it one way, the other.
Yeah, to be, to be fair, that, yeah.
Okay.
So you're saying one point two and?
I mean, come to your own decision.
And five point seven? Yeah, I mean, I throw one point two in there too.
Okay, hold on, hold on, Tammy wants, Sammy, you got something to say? Okay, hold on, hold on, Tammy wants to, Sammy, you got something to say?
Uh, removing the inspections and the safety requirements uh is worrisome to me. One example, of a house short-term rental in Lincoln that had twelve sets of bunk beds in the basement with one stairway in and out, no windows, no bulkhead, no nothing. Twenty-four beds, twelve sets of bunk beds, and built it locked from upstairs, so you go up to a lock door. That is why we need the safety.
Why do you import the fire code?
Hold on, hold on.
Exactly. That's why they should stay in there.
Does the current registration requirement require inspections?
Yes, and they say that, that you have to uh adhere to fire code, safety codes.
No, but it's already required, the, what we have in books now, you require short-term rentals to register and submit to inspections.
An ordinance would have to mirror the registration. You couldn't have an ordinance that said one thing and then registered something else.
But I mean, if it's one way and it's, I, you would still, you could still do inspections. It's in there now.
Right, life safety.
So a lot of this stuff is in there now.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm all for safety, I'm all, I'm all, I'm all for the safety piece of it, like, I think there are some good and bad here. Because we'll say that, so I'm totally in favor of that. It's just that the way that this is written, when you talk about a hearing to all codes that are listed, that will effectively kill a lot of, I mean, that will, that will have the same effect as, as throwing out a lot of the problems. Not, and not because, like, that, that's their extreme example in vain, right, but like, you know, there are windows and coolage because it's a steep thing where the bedroom, the means of escape is more than twenty feet off of the ground. But it's still accessible by fire department apparatus and stuff like that, but that would, that's a, perhaps a house that would be knocked out because the windows.
But could that be a means of egress? It has to be, it's common, no second means of egress is a safety issue, period. Whether it's grandfathered or it was built in nineteen twenty or whatever, that's an issue.
I gotta swear that just happens.
Hey, Jane? I'm okay with you leaving that in there. Most of the Airbnb people who own them, like myself and Steve, take really good care of them. We had the fire chief come over, we asked them to come over, and we asked them all, everything that we should do. Leaving it in there will give them a sense of security. Keep the Airbnb maybe more, maybe more safe um in, in many ways. So that, I don't think that's harmful. I've heard it a couple times, but.
Danielle wants to say something, she had her hand up first.
That's all I'm questioning, sorry, I was just wondering if they already inspected, can I think that she's about it?
Still not.
Oh, Karina?
Jim, can I just say something? Um, I, I hate to chime in, but because we don't know right now if the planning board legally can amend the select board's article, wouldn't it be best to continue the public hearing until the following meeting? Because we already have it scheduled and we already have it posted. Um, so then we could maybe have representatives from the planning board and the select board sit down and get, because we have conflicting views from our attorney, to try to be able to present something at the next public meeting. Um, whether it's then voted on by the, I just feel like we need more legal guidance before the planning board makes a decision. I, I agree with Paul, and I think um maybe we can do that in between now and the next public hearing date.
Well, this is, I can't make changes to the ordinance at the final meeting. This is the meeting to make changes.
Right. I believe we can make, Karina, can't we make changes to this ordinance up until February fifth, something like that?
Yeah, I, so if a public, if a second public hearing is necessary, you can continue the public hearing. As long as you have the public hearing within a certain timeframe, you can have as many public hearings as necessary. So I think you should
What, all right, what is the deadline?
I believe.
That sounds right, but I have to check in the other room.
Yeah, I don't have that day right in front of me either, but I know we schedule, it's, it's when the first one is, and because we had the first one this evening, we're within that timeframe. That, that's all I, that's all I wanted to say. I just feel like making a decision, if the planning board votes on to amend the article and then we have legal opinions that say that they can't do so, um, I just feel like it would behoove us to continue it and get further legal advice.
I mean, we already have two different attorneys with two different opinions.
Right, but I think after this public hearing, the select board may present something different or may, you know, feel differently from the public comic this evening. So it, it may be, um, rather than put something on the warrant that is not enforceable and actually does nothing, I think it would behoove us to try to either come together to a common ground for the next public hearing or present something and have the, the planning board vote totally against it.
I'd, I'd say that's
All right, let's, let's take a few more questions and we can
Yeah, we have more questions.
Sharon, ASAP?
Yes, um, thank you. I did put my um questions in the comments. I was curious how much um the town has put in the budget of twenty twenty-four for legal fees.
I don't have my budget in front of me. Karina, do you know offhand?
Uh, yeah, the budget hasn't been voted on for twenty twenty-four, that will be voted on in March, but I believe we put in ninety-five.
Okay, I would recommend amending that because you'll need at the minimum of a half a million dollars. And I'm told, I, I dealt with this in Boston and have already spoken to Airbnb. First of all, I don't rent my home, it's a second home, we've never rented it. I would in the future like to have that option if need be. Um, but having personal experience dealing with this in the city of Boston, it was very expensive and Airbnb has the financial resources. And I know other friends who do Airbnb have already spoken to them and they are ready and willing to fight this fight.
You know, Karen?
So I just wanted to, if, in the meeting minutes of this, if you can let us know what is going to be budgeted, if you're going to amend the budget north of ninety-five thousand.
Well, if the planning board doesn't vote on the legal budget. Okay, all right, thank you. All right, Tammy, I saw Tammy's hand up.
Just quickly, the, the, the planning board can have a non-meeting with the council and a non-public closed-door meeting between now and the next public hearing to get their legal, the legal counsel's opinion uh without
You know, at the moment, we don't even have counsel.
That's right.
Right.
Planning board, you know, we don't have a budget council right now.
The town has a budget council that, that planning board is entitled to.
Right.
Yeah.
February fifth? Uh, hold on, February fifth?
Yeah.
Last day of the public final hearing.
Okay. Vicki, please say your name, everybody, for the record.
I'm Vicki Martin, I live on Paul Road. I just wanted to reiterate one more time, because it does sound like maybe some people from the select board didn't entirely hear. It's not just the homeowners associations and the condo complexes that are concerned about this proposal. There are a lot of people who have spent a lot of time and effort and money to live in this town, who want to protect the value of our property. It may not be Airbnb being our property now, but would like the option to do it in the future, or our children the option to do it in the future, or would like to protect the value of our home if we ever decide to sell and move on or downsize and be in the same town. So this is not just the homeowners associations that are uh opposed to this bill. This is people who live here and are concerned about the value of our homes and the futures of our families and what this kind of proposal would do to that.
Okay, another thing no one's talked about, that hundred dollar fee is just gonna go up and up and up and up. Hundred dollars is only to get it. Sir, in the back?
Yeah, my name's Paul Turdwan, uh, I'm a village residential as well. And I just like to echo what, what Ms. Martin uh said and also what, what Paul a- and Steve are proposing, Ms. Martin bringing out, eliminating those pair of and, and personally, I resent uh giving favoritism to the HOA and not considering uh, uh, you know, may, maybe we should start an HOA around, around with no fee.
Yeah.
And it's kind of silly.
All it takes is two people. Okay, anyone else?
Just one quick thing, there's a typo in one point two. It says, it says not more than ninety per round thirty consecutive days, so at a minimum, it's like that very, that's, that's it's the last ending of section one point two. Define, define as a rental of a property for more than ninety open per round thirty.
Where are you seeing, where are you seeing that one point two applicability?
Yeah.
The last, that's been corrected, I think. I don't have that in mind.
You don't? I don't mind.
It's in the version I just, yeah.
Jamie, say your name for the record.
She Moden, resident, um, living in a rural residential zone. Um, I would like to recommend that the planning board, the individual members that made the initial motion to pull the language regarding five point seven, to hold their motion at this time and take into consideration town manager Park's recommendation that you continue the public hearing until the next day possible, so that it's further
Close public hearing. All right, anyone else from the public like to speak? Sharon, you're on, your hand is still up. Sharon ASAP?
I just I, sorry, nope, you abandoned my questions, thank you.
Say your name again, ma'am.
Norrie, can they follow? Um, I just wanted to clarify, so if the planning board does not even vote on this, say everything's kosher, they don't have any opinion, the select board will have an opinion if they go to warrant and then people vote on it. And there'll be the voters, my friends, and it'll be the voters, not just the people that have rental properties, just so everybody knows. Does everybody understand that?
Yeah.
And it, because it'll be a ballot question during the day.
During the last
So like, some people have no or you know, what the next
Really good when they put the language in tonight.
There's a question for the board, the board, please.
Yeah, please don't press, want to examine one another.
I, sorry.
Yeah. Ma'am, say your name again for the record, yeah?
Thank, thank you, Michelle. Um, I was seeking clarification, if we extend the public hearing, it would come back together at some date.
It'll be January twenty-fourth.
Okay, and, and then there could be an amendment.
It could be, and yet if we make an amendment, we have to have another hearing on before February seventh.
Bring your friends.
But get, give this group the opportunity to discuss.
We'll all give another chance to speak.
But the select board may withdraw their article.
They could, I don't, I think they've come this far, I don't think, I don't think they will.
But we delete sections like that.
Uh, to Matt Grosshandler?
Thank you, Matt Grosshandler, thirty-three dash one, Big Coolidge in the Village. Uh, I don't often rent, although I have rented in the past. Uh, my, I think some of the, the, the proposed terms in the amendment, in the amendment here are, can be restrictive and are overly uh burdensome. I do believe in the life safety components, I do believe in the parking components, I think there's some component to the proposed bill that makes sense. I think that further evaluation and consideration of the impact of some of those items should be considered before putting it into place.
Twenty-seven dash four.
Bob Fury, twenty-seven dash four, Winter Way. I just want to suggest that this not be sent for public uh vote on it without modifications made. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, before I lower my hand, did you guys hear what I said?
Yeah, we heard you.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Anybody else? Please?
So as it stands right now, you guys have motion seconded.
It looks like they're gonna withdraw the motion, I don't know yet.
I hope you don't.
Okay. All right, anybody else?
We've invested two and a half hours, why don't we get this done tonight? And it reached three points on either side, and uh, why don't we get it finished tonight, that it was keep bragging it on? Maybe some people hope that some people can't make it up here. I, I myself, two hundred fifty mile round run, might, I'll see, I'll come back, I'm bored.
See, see, and say, you need to get the record, please. Sir?
Jack Sutterino.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Uh, Michelle?
Yeah.
Um, President, I, I it, it seems like there is an opportunity, there's a variable we don't know, which is how the board of select will react to this.
Right.
And there's still an opportunity if that reaction is not appealing to this group or uh, to come back and, and write the amendment. Whereas the amendment, there's also the unknown variable that writing the amendment tonight could result in litigation, right?
One party chose, chooses to do so. I would hope, you know, I would hope they would take into consideration the comments that we received here.
But litigation stays the
Yeah.
decision.
Right. Right, is anyone else?
I would just like to say that I agree that I think we should do um something to change the language about it tonight. We think a lot of people have come together and taken their time and given feedback. And it would help, I think, to get that message across to the select board, that there's a lot of people that are not in favor of this and making the change tonight and then presenting it back to them, whether it stands or not. There's a, there were methods of just saying, we're not gonna do anything, we're just gonna wait, talk less, or then talk less.
Okay. Michelle?
Thank you, yes, Michelle. Um, if by making an amendment tonight, does that solidify it? Heard in the, no, okay.
We still have another, another hearing.
The one last thing I would suggest is what, these are complicated issues, right? And if we try to do this in real time here, it's gonna be probably another disaster. Right, I'm, I'm also trying to get it done, and some other people have suggested that I do things that it takes time, personally, I will pull it back and have studies, and look at some of the issues. But given the timeline, we, even within the shortened timeline we have, I think that even just trying to take the current proposed ordinance and just kind of adjust it, I mean, it's something that I don't think we can do in real time right here, I think that maybe it's something that people can think about, I mean, the houses.
Paul? So, my question is, what kind of timing does that allow the planning board? If we don't make that decision and we go to a public, we go to, we meet with an attorney, we'd have to find an attorney first.
We have to find an attorney.
We'd have to find an attorney first, then, then it's, then it's gonna
He's prejudiced.
Right, and, and then we're gonna come back and some of these people may not be able to be here some night. I mean, it, it, after having listened to everybody that's here.
Why, why don't we finish up with the public comment, then we can talk some more?
Well, I didn't know what you were, yeah, okay, go.
Okay, would anyone else like to speak before we close public comment? Okay, is there a motion to close public?
I'd just like to uh, again, restate, making an amendment tonight, allow for section one point one, one point two, five point seven. And uh, just make the whole thing no void, because the select are, obviously, from what the statement was, they're ready to move forward with it regardless of what anyone's
Yeah. All right, so, all right, and we'll take close public comment?
So
Wait a minute. One more, Michael Nager. Michael Nager, would you like to speak?
I just want to thank you all for, for allowing us all to speak and giving us this opportunity and for spending as much time and you obviously have done a lot of, a lot of work already, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to close public hearing.
ASAP, Joe Alonteva?
All right.
Aye. Great.
We have a motion?
All right, you gotta continue with it. What's the motion?
The same one. I guess I can modify it to say to pull out section five point seven and section one point two. Which will I thought it was three. There's, yeah, the two sections were five point seven and one point one, one point two and five point seven will, will get it to the point where um, we can still have another public hearing. Um, it will show the board of selection that we're, we're behind people that took their time to come here tonight. Um, and I think I'm, I'm just standing behind that. We can still, we, we can still meet with council before the next public hearing, we can still, you know, we can both put that public hearing out until the last possible day and give everybody a chance to do their schedules, but um, I think this, this shows that the planning board is supportive of the people that took their time to come here tonight. I mean, I can remember when we did the uh, the dispatch. I mean, I can remember when we did the, uh, rid of dispatch, we probably had less, much the amount of people as we had here tonight, and, and we kept the dispatch, so.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of comments made about not having this time. I, I didn't hear very many that were saying, yes, please, please do it, so.
I started out with, uh, people in favor, and went right to the negative comments.
Yeah, I mean, so, again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep my motion and amend it to include section one point two.
Okay.
So, second.
So, we're gonna remove section one point two applicability.
Yeah.
This article shall apply to short-term rentals as that term is defined in section one point one below. This article shall not apply to occupancies that do not constitute transient occupines, occupancies defined as a rental of a property for more than thirty, thirty consecutive days.
And five, and five point seven.
Five point seven, allowed uses for short-term rentals, short-term rentals are allowable in the following zones, general use, village center, mountain residential, short-term rentals are not allowed in the following zones, village residential, general residential, rural residential, small business development.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll, I'll keep my motion. We're gonna say.
Alright, Joe seconded it, any further discussion? Alright, all in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Closed.
Don't delete.
I will, I will, I will abstain.
We'll, I'm gonna talk about it with the order selectmen before we, before I vote. Okay, thank you.
There was a question.
Yeah.
You, did it warn us having a local attorney to discuss, or you the town council?
Well, he's already advised the select, so I don't think that's what I needed to get the same counsel. Thanks, everybody that, I'm gonna speak then.
Just, just to be clear, Jim, that by, by voting on that.
Continue in this hearing, on, on January, January twenty-fourth.
Come on!
Five minute recess. Yes.
Thank you.
What the fuck? What the fuck? Excuse me, Carol? 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 Can you mute, can you mute Mr. PJD on Zoom?
You know what it's gonna do? So, who's gonna go to somebody young, on the car? These people have, they have. Some get, let them get somebody, they cut too much, I mean, they're.
We're gonna go with the. Who we going to next, I mean, gentlemen?
Alright, please call the meeting back to order, please. We're gonna move on, no, we're gonna move on to, uh.
Do we wanna move on to subdivision?
Yeah, let's move on to that, just give me a second.
I'll make a motion, then we move on to the, uh, new business, the two major subdivisions.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Can I ask, can I ask a question before we vote?
Certainly, go ahead.
Is the
Okay.
Is the adjustment of the zoning district designation for Tom Tremblay, uh, thought would be a quick, easy thing before we get into a long, um, subdivision discussion?
Yeah, we can do, we can do Tom, I don't, anyone have any objection to doing Tom first?
I don't.
Give me a second to talk.
Try to get rid of your Tom.
Which one are we doing here?
It's having a page two, adjust the zoning designation.
Number seven?
Yeah, so make, someone make a motion.
I'll make a motion, retract my other motion, make a motion, we go with number seven, adjusting the zoning dis- district designation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
We already went through all the, the Tom, right?
So.
Yeah.
All of the different official, we need an official vote to make this.
Okay, we go, just its owning, just the zoning district designation, for recent minor, minor boundary line adjustment between two adjacent lots owned by Thomas Tremblay. One lot is located in the general use T U district, one lot is located in rural residential R R district. Property owner Thomas P. Tremblay, trustee Thomas P. Tremblay, local trustee, P O Box two thirty-five Lincoln, New Hampshire, zero three two five one dash zero two three five, applicant surveya, got the Kellogg, uh, Kellogg Surveying and Mapping, two fifty-four Mans Hill Road, Littleton, New Hampshire, zero five six one, minus subdivision, BLA, suburb thirteen, twenty twenty-three. Planning board approved minus subdivision, AKA lot line adjustments, LLA, a boundary line adjustment, BLA, correct the rear boundary line between the following properties, one eighty-nine Main Street, Main Street, map one one seven, lot four, property is located within general U G U district and has point seven seven acres or thirty-three thousand five hundred forty-one square feet. Lot has two structures on it, one structure with a restaurant slash take-up business known as half-baked fully room, and second structure with a mixed-use single-family residence upstairs and a local bank at a real estate office on the ground floor. Second law is nineteen Moran Lane, just changed to Three Meadow Lane, map one one seven, lot seventeen. Property is located within the rural residential R R district, is point four six acres, twenty thousand thirty-eight, twenty thousand thirty-eight square feet. Lot has a single-family residence with attached garage on the lot. Explanation, two lots share a rear boundary line, BLA, BLA shifted rear boundary line of one eighty-nine Main Street slightly towards Main Street, given the rear lot, one eighty-nine Main Street, map one one seven, lot seventeen, an additional point zero four acres of land, increasing the size from point four six acres to one hundred fifty acres, and reducing the size of one eighty-nine Main Street, map one one seven, lot four, point seven three to point six nine acres. This leaves a slice of land five feet wide in the west, fifteen feet wide in the east, with the general use district designation. Entire village center district is the area, well, is the area follows the boundary, property boundary lines for the front lots, and EB recommends that the zoning district boundary line line with the adjustment in property boundary lines. So basically, uh, he did the lot line adjustment last month, um, and it resulted in the lots zoning lines not matching up with the property boundaries. We're just asking, put that on the warrant to adjust the zoning district boundaries matched, conform with the lot lines.
I'll make a motion that we put it on the ballot, we just.
Get open, public hearing. The board have any discussion on this? Is there a motion to open public comment?
Yeah.
Paul? Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone like to speak?
It's just a quick question, it doesn't, um, change the zoning on either lot, it just aligns the lot.
Right, it just, I housekeep it.
Motion to close public hearing.
Yeah.
Second.
Alright, Paul made the motion, you're second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there a motion to prove this and send it off with a town warrant?
Sub move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, enjoyed it, man.
Had to wait a long time to get that done.
I could have achieved the results.
So.
Major subdivisions. Who's here for this? Mona.
You can steal some of those chairs, man.
Okay. All looks together, the total of the four eight parcels, four duplexes and twenty-four single-family residences, with access to the proposed development to be provided from Hamptonville Drive, Whiteford Lane, and Alcu Lane, depending on the location of the individual lots. On finding application with subdivision requirements of Lincoln subdivision regulations, board will vote to accept each application, plead a public hearing on the merits of proposal, will call immediately, should a decision not reach a public hearing, the application will state on the planning board agenda for this time as the application is approved or disapproved.
Do, do we still have the letter from the owner, um, stating that he present this?
What? No, they bought, they bought, so, there's an authorization letter.
Certainly, okay.
Yeah. I think it's for both of them.
And this gentleman's name is, what's his? Ethan?
Well, there's two, um.
Kyle.
Two, one is Kyle McManus, called Coolidge Ridge, I'll see, the second one.
Oh, it's working, sure.
We can totally, for Tom Tremblay's, need two, Anthony Burris.
Yep.
Um, we can now, but I, we can see that's a lot.
Thanks.
Thank you, I'm, and Steve, I work for board.
You need to begin, I'm talking.
Keith, current, Keith, for engineering, uh, Ethan is here, actually, um, he wanted to, uh, want to own this property. Um, we're talking about both, both properties that have divided, they're both, uh, then acting next to each other, so we separated the submission of the two different parcels, but if you want to talk about the whole thing.
So, Carol, just point of clarification here, do you have, uh, the most recent technical review team, like the step review team meeting, uh, report?
Just got it, when I walked in last night.
Okay.
Okay, so, alright.
Thank you. It's a part was grateful last night, but I can get, if you can, anything told, it's there, it's.
So you won't be able to answer any of this, but.
I, you figured a little bit of it, um, we speak to him, you can please go. Cover it all, so we can check the item. Cover it all, we need to check the item, we need to talk more about it, so. Um, so here is one piece up here, um, which is at the end of Anthony Hill, the Valley Lane. That's the one that's under Coolidge Ridge LLC, it's about six point eight one acres. The lower portion down here, that, which is under Lincoln Valley Development LLC, so over ten acres, and that's significantly less than the white first line. But this just only shows, uh, how we can subdivide the two different parcels. Uh, under the, the, um, the top part, the idea is that it would be four duplexes, six single families. So like one, two, three, four, five, so it was six, and you have four duplexes. And the bottom piece down here would be seven single families and one two three four. So therefore, for the time we have, this all be, uh, so twenty lots, um, five duplexes and, um, uh, the twenty-three single families, and it's only three lots, six point nine acres. Um, the second parcel is, uh, Sloping Woods, early, there's an access trouble with, with the old farmhouse, it's, um, existing wells. There's also, you know, those time wetlands on the property. When we laid out, and it's all down the lower portion. Uh, by the, uh, Whitebird Lane, when we laid out the road, we actively laid out to try to minimize the actual impact to the wetlands. And actually, we are impacting less than three thousand square feet, actually, with two thousand seven hundred fifty square feet. Um, just to know, um, before I kind of pronounce that, um, soils are all empty soils, which have a good application rate, which is outside of the stormwater. So again, this just lays it out, so the idea is Manville Drive would be extended a little bit. And then be one, two, three, four, five, well, on top of that. Valley Lane actually ends at a hammerhead, there's three two-pack slots both there. And then extension of Whitebird Lane, again, would be women's lots, and there'd be a hammerhead at, at the end. If that's not coming through. Also note, besides the wetlands that I highlighted here, that are shaded, there's also an extreme over here, and perennial stream on the side of it. Next page, just kind of just blow off the two areas, different parts of the, either the feet, which is closed. So again, this be the upper parcel. Uh, it's such a mention hill. And they, same thing with the front, if you get used to, they know a lot showing, you know, driveways. Both stormwater, basically, you know, top of the stormwater, a little bit further. Again, so the position started with here. To know, um, we actually need all the requirements of the, the lots, I mean. From all the many lot areas and everything's met, that being several of these lots, if these ones up here are consuming lots in the, in lots, lot areas.
How long is the driveway to lots, uh, six?
Six?
On the right-hand side.
About this one, yeah. I know it off the top of my head, I could scale it one.
Sorry?
I could scale it, I don't know how, how long it is.
This sucks.
It's forty feet.
Um, just to know, you know, there is a couple shared driveways, lot three and lot four, for example, shared driveway. Another thing to know...
This sucks!
Sorry. PJD.
Another thing to know, when we made this out, was, we tried to make the least amount of impact, right, it's all wooden. So you'll notice there's no plucked lawns, right, we kept everything kind of tight, to be green, and the idea was nothing, to do the least amount of, of money, right? So that's the idea, same thing, the idea was to not to disturb, like, well, you know, limit their, towards the, the balance. This again would be the lower, the lower piece, the extension here. It's just same thing, show it, it's house, the drivers, the wetlands. Still, the wetman impacts, uh, we have an impacted, or a four, or a five, seven fifty square feet. You'll notice there's some low, small retaining walls, that are less than four feet. The idea of that is to limit it impacts the weather, so therefore, we don't have the retaining wall, can you create off the roads, and then go about it.
I'll go to getting all the rock, or...
Yeah, it's really rock.
Really rock?
Yeah, all left, four feet or less, they're non-structural.
Yep, yep.
Next plan is the, the raining in Manhattan, when this is put up the top piece. Um, because I agree, so important note here is the main infiltration basin here. So a lot of the development, for the infiltration base here, so obviously, we have, we're following the town's regulations and also the state regulations, regulations when it comes to stormwater. So quantity and quality, and that includes the power requirement, the twenty-five year volume requirements. So therefore. For twenty-five year storm, uh, we're actually below what runs off the site now, volume. So actually, it's better, it's a better condition, actually, more gets held on, so that's one of the features where we're taking the purpose area and sending it to the infiltration basin and goes back into the ground.
Are, are you, are you reviewing this, um? For that, off-site mitigations, off-site impact will be mitigated?
Yes.
Ray was, Ray has commented in here about the, uh, the culvert, the culvert that's flooding the past, the, the overtopping, uh, down by a community center.
Yeah.
So, you, you, you're taking this into consideration when you do that, but we thought, we had an issue with, with another development where, um, that actually caused some serious flooding, uh, down nearby community buildings, so yours is gonna be tough, tough there, I, I'm assuming that it's going to contribute to that, you're gonna have something under the ground, but it sounds like you're gonna have something contributing to it.
So, we have a whole stormwater model, it's probably a very good point, that actually goes through an analysis of all four discharge points. So we're mimicking basically where the flow, approach off the site and help, and add these two discharge points, except for one on top of, the actual peak runoff, the runoff of all the storms, it's less than it is in the existing pit. So actually, it's going to get back, and then same thing with the volume, the twenty-five year volume that comes off the site is actually less because of the way we're designing stormwater with the infiltration basins, there's another one. So there you have it, we're taking totally thing that coming, totally don't exacerbate it, you're gonna have it downstream, you know, and that's where the copper though, and you have to get it down, down, I mean.
It seems to me that some of the, the engineering requirements, I'm not an engineer, but common sense, when you drive around on a big, the big rains that we've been getting, the storms we've had, um, and they all go into these basins, these drainages to, to these culverts, they all appear to be, they were all approved at one time, but they all appear now to be undersized. And it seems like, you know, we, we, not all of them, but we get a lot of flooding due to, due to that, you know, in, in different developments, so. I don't know how, what, what type of, uh, considerations are given to that.
Yeah, so the, the rainfall events that we actually know, which is actually higher, so we've actually picked a more conservative rainfall event, for example, by the twenty-five year, twenty-four hour storm. I don't know, it's off my head, but we actually picked a larger rainfall event than we could have. So we went, if we do that as a complex, we picked a more conservative, that would know, you know, so that, that's built into the whole model that Ray, as we view, and so forth. Where you're gonna show you, they, they showed you at all of these discharge points, I mean, off-site, how we're reducing the runoff from the site. They use this rainfall data, and it takes into the whole model where, based on how much, what your surface is and so forth, so I have to be, I, obviously, increasing the purbius, right, so that has more runoff. But the idea was right now, just sheets off, we have to keep it in, getting it in.
Your cat, yeah, but, you know, the, the reason that it overflowed that community center was not because of you, it was because of Forest Ridge. But Forest Ridge is still not built out yet, so there's still a lot more water to be coming from Forest Ridge through that community-centered watershed.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that, that's, I'm not sure how all that works, but...
Yeah, I can't speak to what the, what it was, or what was approved.
Does Carol, does it sound near, look that, does Ray look at that and say? Is Ray on there?
Yeah, he's here.
Hey, Ray, you there?
I didn't see that.
I am.
There you are. So, my question is, do you take into consideration, um, the future build-up of Forest Ridge and how that, um, drainage will impact, um, that, that, uh, drainage down in the community center with, with this development, because Forest Ridge is not, nor near built out yet.
Well, uh, I, I think the, the best way to handle that is to, uh, for any, uh, for this development and any future development, you know, uh, make sure that they comply with your stormwater management ordinance, that's how the stormwater management ordinance was structured, so, um, any future development up in Forest Ridge, they should comply with the stormwater management ordinance, which basically articulates that the, uh, net rate and volume of discharge coming off of the site has to be zero between the pre and post-development condition. So, as long as you do that, you should, it shouldn't be a problem, at least for the twenty-five year event.
We have... Are, are twenty-five year events the, the more normal, or are we having fifty and a hundred year events more often now? So, I mean, do we have any data that suggests that the twenty-five year events are, are, because it seems to me that a lot of the water shed, it seems to be more than what, um, what was planned on.
Well, I mean, um, you know, you, you, you can certainly take a s- look at your stormwater management ordinance, and you can increase that twenty-five year threshold to fifty year thre- threshold, if you, you think that would be appropriate, maybe it's something to look at, some communities actually have a fifty year threshold. Um, but, um, yeah, I mean, the, the short answer to that is, the intensity and the, uh, frequency of more intense storms is happening, uh, more readily. So there's no question about that, and that's related to, you know, um, you know, climate change, so that's going to continue, I mean, the way we're designing drainage facilities now is different than what we did thirty years ago, you know, we used to design drainage systems for a ten-year event, we don't do that anymore, so, because of that particular issue, so, when it comes to sustainable design and infrastructure, uh, that's certainly something that we take into consideration, but you're, you're kind of bound by your stormwater management ordinance, so if, if you're, if that's a concern of the community, then, you know, maybe a revisit on the stormwater management sometime in the future that you may want to take a look at, because of the increase in the, um, frequency of the more intense storms, um, you know, maybe a fifty year threshold is more appropriate for your community, particularly given your community's in a flashy watershed to begin with, with the east branch of the Pemmy.
Yeah. I know it's just people anyway, they might have, have problems with that, um, community center drainage overflow.
Yeah, so, I mean, as far as the community center drainage is concerned, it's really critical that you keep that, um, that stream, um, clear and clean, and same thing with the culvert. Um, you know, you gotta make sure that you do routine maintenance, make sure that, that culvert is at its full capacity, so to combat the flow, so you're not overtopping it and flooding out the parking lot, uh, next to the community center building, so, that's, you know, those types of, those are the types of, um, mitigation measures that you can actually implement, you know, in terms of routine maintenance, in order to make sure that, you know, you don't have a, you don't have a problem there, as far as runoff from developments, again, your stormwater management ordinance, that's why, that's why, again, the community center was why you adopted a stormwater management ordinance in the first place, you know, back in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, that's when we kind of got involved in the issues, so, um, so, um, really, your control mechanism here is your stormwater management ordinance, and that should be adhered to, in our opinion, and it should be carried through, not only from, through a, you know, design review stage, but all the way through, you know, um, actual construction, to make sure that, you know, you achieve the outcomes you ultimately want to achieve.
So yes, that's the, that's the bylaws, you know, town ordinance, that's, that we're following, the twenty-five year point.
See that road, flood two feet over, even, wasn't there any development up there? Go, on the old church, rest center was a lot, I just wanted to go along, and then go way around on foot, start and come back, written on there. There's more development out there, never had that. You're honest. Yeah, my, my, that's all we thought we'd see.
To the next page, similar situation. Protection, how we have this infiltration basin, where we all have run down the lower portion. Same by data, we are allowing runoff to... I mean, so, you can't, you can't say anything, that makes way down for me to stand, I guess, right there. So yeah, we did, into it as a whole, this, like I said, in a, for the, human discharge point, we check it at all of those discharge point, so therefore, you know, you're not just reducing the runoff here, but you're also reducing the runoff at another part of the site. So again, this is same thing, it's just showing the, the, the road, the retaining wall, road rails, so it's all the units, the driveways, the ways, so forth and so the other thing. Highlighting the blue on those wetland impact loads, great one. The bottom on page four through the bottom, at the bottom, that is all Eric spoke about. So to note still, we have to submit the state permitting. Uh, we have to get on the rain permit from the state, David viewed advantage analysis also, we also need a sewer connection permit. And then we also, uh, need a drill fill permit to fill these, fill these wells, so there's still state permitting, I, we haven't, we wanted to talk to you guys first, to you guys first, and I'm gonna make those emails. Page is, uh, Julie's man, the same with the hot app. So you guys know you can have public water and public storm, so all these areas should be fed from the same things, the existing facilities, not be the water, the sewer would be, be a gravity. Uh, it's a manual drive, that's how that's set up. Uh, you have, uh, let, you know, let's go, obviously, the idea would be to do underground, uh, if you don't... Or have, same idea. Except, um, the way it is right here, this is fed by gravity, this sewer. This is too low, as you know, this all goes down, this thing, so we actually have, uh, fourth thing, that means, this may have been both by gravity. It's four things, so each of these units have their own, it's called E one grinder pump. And it's responsible to the home, but that, therefore, it's a self-contained package outside, so you get into that, and that, that fourth thing then ties to the total fourth thing that, yeah, so instead of doing one collective pump station, each of these have their own self-contained grinder pump on their lot, which they're responsible to maintain. So, that is wrong, instead of using all three of the one pump station that are coming up here. So...
The responsibility of the common utilities, meaning the wa- water and sewer mains that these are, these pumps are gonna go into, is that in association?
So that comes down?
Is that specified so much?
It depends on that, that comes down, it's actually one of the points, I mean, the town will take ownership, but if it goes there with the town, the town's not gonna take ownership, it goes there with all our association. But either way, even if the town takes ownership, it should be closed, these pump stations that are on each lot, that's the home, for the sponsor, so they're gonna get fixed, because they can't pump the toilet, they're gonna go fix their homes.
So the pumps will be installed at the time with land is divided?
They'd be, no, they, those pumps install with the home.
With the home, so we have to stop to the purchase of the lot and install.
Yeah, there's, obviously, the utility, that the, the road where you chose to be installed and stubbed out of the road, but the self-contained pump would be installed without the holes. And then they tie into that, tie that maintenance system.
Yep.
Next.
All right, so who's gonna maintain all the water, um, drainage structures?
So same thing, we actually would like the town to take ownership of these roads, for example, Mansion Hill, when we adding, it's already, that's public road, correct? I'm only adding, I think it's a hundred fifty million feet. So, we actually like the town to take ownership of that, so town's taking ownership of the road, basically taking ownership of the utilities, you know, for the stormwater.
So, yeah, I mean, that's sort of planning, but I believe that's for a town meeting.
That's for a town meeting.
Yeah, well, that, that, that's what we'd like. You know?
It's been a while since down the absorbent developer.
Yeah, I could understand this one is a long, but Mansion Hill, I mean, we're, like, I don't know how long the road is to get to where we are, we're adding a little small section.
But you gotta realize, if the town digs that over for you, all these other developments around here are gonna look at it, so.
So that would be, yeah, because the ownership of the road, you know, so obviously, the town would take ownership of the road, and all the utility mains and so forth, would all under that homeowners association. Actually, I was gonna spend the plans just to eat, it's thing, so also, probably says, you really control plants, so that obviously, make sure they're reconstructed, and then obviously, we're protecting, you know, you know, we're protecting, obviously, the wetlands and the downstream.
I'm assuming this is gonna be a phase project, so you won't?
Yeah, I mean, you, you can just talk about, talk about phases, so.
Yeah, uh, yeah. Let's see the man, and... I, I, I didn't quite hear what you said, but then... Yes, it's, it's gonna be phased. Gonna be phased, so, will all of the primary utilities and infrastructure, talking water and sewer, will that be phased as well, or will you do it all, have the, have the infrastructure all in at the time of...
The top half, the top...
We need to save for the minutes.
Read your name, sir.
For, for Ethan, call me with, with Bridge, LLC, and, um... Yeah, the top, I call it the top half, but banner, uh, Mansion Hill. Probably approach both sections first, maybe play, he said it's a short stretch of road, it's a hundred fifty people, but all the utilities and, build that out, uh, the Whitebird section. Build that out, uh, the white bird section. It might make sense to go back to where the pump house is. Build that out and then continue further in, but again, we'll wait to see what the. The demand is and what the world's doing when we get ready to break out.
But, yeah, right. So my, my question is really relates to the drainage as well. So i- if you're looking at all, all of the stormwater drainage. If that's gonna be phased as well, then w- will that? Impact? The drainage.
Yeah.
Where else? I mean, and, and furthermore that. Have you done a study that, have you been asked to do a study as to whether or not the town has available water and sewer?
Yes, yes, Ray can speak to that. So that is, those have all been done. Uh, Weston C F S, I think Ray has done, um, the water. Water capacity analysis. Sorry, Ray, I was just talking about you asking about the water capacity analysis that had been submitted.
Right?
Yes, I'm sorry. Is there a question there?
Yeah, has the water and sewer capacity analysis come down to this project?
Uh, we still, we need to have a conversation with Nate regarding the, uh, sewer capacity, just to confirm with him if he's had any, um. Any issues in that portion of the collection system. So that conversation hasn't happened yet. We're still under design review at this point. So, um, once I have that conversation, I suspect that, you know, it, it's probably not going to be an issue. Um, the, um, as far as the water capacity is concerned, um. I don't have the numbers in front of me, uh, so, and I looked at, we've looked at them, you know, probably two or three months ago, uh, initially when we were first talking about the project. Uh, but I believe, uh, there's sufficient water capacity and the hydraulic analysis for the, uh, the fire, uh, the, the. Uh, for fire protection has been completed and we received that report, uh, on Friday. And the, um, initial conclusions indicates that there's sufficient fire protection for the development. But that has to be confirmed and reviewed by Ron, uh, Fire Chief Beard.
Just to speak back to, you talk about the phasing with the stormwater. So for example, for, you know, to eat and go and install utilities and pave the road. Wherever that discharge to that, that stormwater would have to be in place, right? So, for example, if he's putting down a road that, that includes in this space there. As part of that phasing, you'd have to install that base.
And there's enough water for hydrants, pressure for the hydrants.
That's what the analysis was that Ray is. So it's provided back to Ray, wouldn't be dissipating, uh, number of any board, which then, then it's been, uh, blow for water too. So that we provided that back a couple of months ago.
So, so since how it's a phased project, would, would it be required to be bonded? Would that be something that? Pardon me?
To me, just consider to make a subdivision.
Right, right. I mean, yeah, just because it's.
So I didn't, yeah, that was the end of my presentation. Um, I didn't obviously include all the teeth, but as Tom said, you have the goal plan. We also have all the. And then also, I mean, moving my room, we put in the one like that, but we, uh, we profiled, right? So we profiled all the roads. Which shows the road rates and also shows all the utilities within the road. And just so you know, we did follow all of the town regular design standards for the roads. So we didn't go, we're not asking for any wave above going steeper or anything like that or curves or anything. We did follow. But, you know, we're meeting the requirements of town.
So traffic generation, did you?
Yeah, no, there was, then we didn't do a, do a study.
Didn't do a traffic study? I mean, you're, you're, you're bringing how many lots to the, how many houses? Twenty eight, are they all going through one, one road or it's gonna be paired up by C call?
Yeah, I mean, they all come up mansion hill, right? And they break off. Yeah.
So that the in and out is only mansion hill drive and then they break off into others. It's not other, there's no other exit or?
No, there's not. There's this, the perennial stream, so we didn't cross that. That's just a man or something there. So they all do make their way down mansion hill.
I don't know if this is the appropriate time to bring this up, but, um. Uh, when I gave the notice to a butters, I did the notice to the legal buttering, based on. For the minimal, um, requirements, however, those people that live on mansion hill. Road, um, you know, they're not considered legal butters, but they probably do have. Um, a claim that they would be impacted.
Or they can say their property is gonna be adversely affected. They can take complaint upon status.
So I guess what I recommend is the planner that, um. That you make a decision about whether or not to include those people as legal butters that would give them.
The people that have requested or everybody in the general.
Everybody in that general vicinity who are gonna be impacted by the use of that road as well. On a list, I can make a list and, um, you know, if, uh. And I, and I recommend that we, uh, notify them.
Good with that? Anyone any interest with that?
Yeah, uh, is there any reason why, why you did not, uh, try and make? Another exit out of there, other than the perennial stream?
Don't have, don't have ownership. Just no ownership to get out to, um, Paul it. Right, I'm a Paul, yeah, I mean, actually even tried and just the other side, you know, crossing the perennial. Again, trying to get ownership to get to there. So, I mean, it was, it was looked at. But which.
Previous planning boards, they wanted to come up from Jerry's property up on Pollard Road. And the amount, the amount of area required to commit and give enough turn rate instrument off on Pollard created a problem. Would create a problem. That's why the original development, that would have been, couldn't come on Pollard Road in another location. It contains, saying that, that one location is coming on now. That's the transfer in the past. That's why there isn't room enough for another exit coming off it.
Okay, so Carol did ask a question about including the other residents everywhere in mansion hill. Does it put us, does anyone have an issue with that?
No.
Steve? OJ, you still with us? He's there, he's top row in the center.
He's muted, I think.
Yeah. Well, which is? So four of us, yes. One no vote.
Okay, so, so by Friday I'll have the biggest result. Whatever you decide is gonna be.
Well, that, that was gonna be my question. How are we gonna, we, we need to specify.
Right.
Who it's gonna be and we can't leave somebody out that hang on, be aware of this, so. If they're noticing, if they didn't get a notice of this meeting, because they've.
They're not, you know, illegal or better.
Right.
Um, however, I think that if I look at it, we talk to both Ray and, um, to. Engineer, we can make sure that we get the people who would be impacted by the traffic gonna come down that road.
Yeah, I noticed was all we went on butter, some butters crossing.
Well, no, it's, it's, it's but for the road or but for the stream it would touch. So I looked at everybody who would touch either one of those sections. And mostly all the people that received notice. But I'm very aware of that, the, the other, the other people on mansion hill that do not touch. Are gonna be impacted.
Yeah, we have, we have few letters, people are asking for about a stat in. So I think if, if we're gonna grant it to them, we really need to include everybody.
Four or both, yeah, I'm just, there, there's a development, that development on them. That comes to the left hand side, that's gotta, that, that comes into mansion hill right.
On those mansion hill partners.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, but see, that's one, for me, that's one notice.
Notice.
That's one notice and then HOA then. There, each. So that, you know, that's an easy notice to do and I just wanna make sure that I get everybody. Who's gonna be impacted by the traffic coming, um, down to the bottom of the mansion hill.
Yeah, that's tricky.
Well, I don't think it's that tricky. If I look at the maps and, and the two, your bucket wall is there so I can manually choose those people. It's not gonna be difficult. And I'll check with, uh, so I'll have Ray look at it, we'll have you look at it and we'll. Uh, make sure that we haven't lost, missed anybody because I don't, I don't want to have somebody who's 30 considered in the butter. And not get noticed, not really.
Did you have some quick share?
My name's John Gardner. I live on mansion hill towards the bottom. Um, where does the traffic stop impacting? I mean, I would say it could go as far as Eastford Road. Down Pollard Road, you know, all the traffic.
Public comment and second.
So it's probably not gonna include, so Pollard Road. It's gonna include all the way down until we hit Eastford. It'll be yours, it'll include yours at the intersection.
So that? Is that a town road? Eastburg?
Mm-hmm, yes.
I mean, the one that.
Birch. Which one you talked about?
So, so the one that connects Pollard Road to?
Yeah, Eastford.
Eastford, that, that's a town road. Does it affect the state? The, the other one's state road, right? So do they have to, does that affect that traffic on that?
Really?
Okay, so at the bottom of mansion.
Well, either they go up.
Including where the fire station is, they're gonna be. Um, so that's, that's where we're heading off. The intersection of Pollard and mansion hill.
But it's gonna.
And, you know, everybody that comes off those, uh, the road, the white bird plane. Anybody that has gotten before.
It directly, that's directly affected, you can consider their partner.
I'm saying it might.
And I'll check and see who most people are and make sure that, uh, see where they are.
Did you have any other questions? Carol, do you have anything else?
Um, no, I, I didn't know whether you, um, wanted to talk to Ray about the issue of whether, um.
His memo.
His memo or completion.
Ray, can, can you have a comment on the memo you submitted?
Uh, sure, happy to, um. Yeah, as far as the, um, uh, we just wanted to identify where we were in the process. The, the project is, um, in the design review stage. Uh, we're ninety, I would say we're ninety percent through it. Um, had some conversations with Keith. Um, about some of these issues and some of the things that we're gonna bring to the planning board and, and basically my memo. Uh, just articulates some observations and comments, uh, things that the planning board may want to take into consideration. So, uh, the first item was ownership of the roadway utilities needs to be clarified. So there wasn't any, anything in the documentation that we reviewed that indicated whether, you know, that the developer was gonna come and, and request that. The extension to White Birch Lane, um, you know, whether they're gonna request that the town, you know, take that over now or sometime in the future. So I think just some sort of acknowledgement as to, um, what's gonna be, you know, within the public way and what's not. Uh, would be good for the planning board to know, uh, before you actually vote for approval. So that was our first comment. The second one in this, I, I think it, it gets back to what Paul raised as far as the stormwater, uh, management issues. Uh, uh, are concerned and, and basically it, consideration should be given to ensuring that those, that wetlands complex that's located on the property. Is preserved and protected. Um, that's certainly our recu- recommendation because that. That wellland area is, um, is definitely a ten, in our opinion, it's attenuating any, uh, runoff coming off of that, the side of that mountain. So preserving and protecting that long term would be advantageous from a, just from a stormwater, uh, management standpoint. Because it would attenuate the flood flows coming off of the mountain and that actually, you know, ultimately get to the brook that runs parallel to Pollard Road. And then that brook obviously discharges to the inlet to the culvert at the community center that we just talked about. So consideration should be given to, um, coming up with, you know, a mechanism or I, you know, some way to set aside. The, the, that wetland area so that it's preserved going forward because it has those benefits from a stormwater management, uh, standpoint. Uh, and it'll, you know, mitigate, um, any, any impacts to town infrastructure and the budding property owners.
Ray, Ray, this Paul, based on, based on your comments and this plan that's submitted, uh, does this plan? Uh, take care of that wetlands area?
Well, um, the, the way, the way I'm reading the, the documentation is that each of the property, you know, there's gonna be wetlands. That are gonna be on each one of the individual properties. So there's nothing that says that e- any one of those individual property owners. Can go to the, you know, to the wetlands bureau and request, you know, a wetlands permit to do some filling of those wetlands in order to, to whatever they wish to do on their property. So, um, if, if this portion or if the entire development is gonna be under an HOA. There's, there's mechanisms that you can put in place that it would be, you know, the, the HOA would actually either have ownership o- over that footprint to the wetlands area. Or there would be some sort of, um, easement, uh, that would not allow the individual property owners to actually fill in those wetlands. So that, that has not been identified to us and I, we haven't seen anything that documents that that, those, those mechanisms would be put in place. And our suggestion is that the board fully vet that and understand that before you vote for approval.
So the suggestion would be to put that as a condition of approval?
Um. No, I, I would go so far as to say that you might wanna understand that in more detail, um, before you, before you approve.
Forest Ridge for the. For that section up there.
Yeah, I mean, you know, obviously if it's, if this is gonna be under an HOA, then there should be HOA documents. The town should have an opportunity to review. Um, and sign off on those, you know, HOA documents. And if in that HOA, there's. An articulation that that wetlands complex is gonna be under the jurisdiction of the HOA, to me that has. That, that, I'm not an attorney here, but to me that has, you know, um, that has a better chance of success. That that wetlands complex is gonna remain as is now and into the future. Um, you really just don't wanna fill in that wetlands area and you don't wanna. You wanna protect it as, you know, to, to the best of your ability. And it would be my recommendation that the board understand what that looks like before you vote on the, or approval on the, on the, on the project.
Is it, is it possible they could give a conservation easement to some? You know, some non, nonprofit organization to protect the wetlands?
Uh, yeah, conceivably they, they could do that. I don't know that they need to go to that extent, um. Again, yeah, I, again, I think they, they should come forward with some sort of proposal if this is an important consideration for the planning board. And you should vet that, you know, you know, vet that part of their proposal and have a full understanding of it. You know, in the interest of protecting your infrastructure and protecting the buddy property owners. The next item that we think, um, we just, uh, would be getting clarity and should be sought as to the ownership and the long-term operation and maintenance responsibilities. Of the permanent stormwater management facilities. Again, um. If there's no indication as to who's gonna own it. So, um, I think the, you know, that probably, I can't see the exhibits. But I think probably what Keith shared was in, in one of the first exhibits was the, you know, the section of the development that comes off of mansion hill. Um, just to the, to the right of where they're tying into mansion hill. There's a proposed, um, infiltration basin. So that infiltration basin is located on an individual's lot. So who's responsible for that infiltration basin? Because there's a lot of stormwater that's flowing to that infiltration basin. Cause there's a lot of stormwater that's flowing to that infiltration basin and the outlet to that infiltration basin. Discharges into adjoining property, um, the development that abuts this particular development and also, um, at a, a single family house lot. So again, in the interest of, um, doing whatever you can to protect the abutters' interests, um, understanding. Who's gonna own it because that's critical to making sure that that, those facilities are maintained long term. Cause if they aren't, then you could potentially have a problem than the. The net zero discharge pre and post development that they're articulating in their drainage analysis now. Uh, they may, that may not happen, that may not be there in ten years if those facilities aren't properly maintained, um, over time. So. Again, I, we think that this is an important enough issue. For the planning board to have full clarity as to what that looks like going forward.
So when you talk about the planning board knowing and having clarity, does that mean that we need to request a? Uh, a written plan? Or proposal up? From this applicant stating how that's going to be addressed?
Yeah, well, the, the, the mechanism that you do that, that's in place is under your stormwater management, um. Under your stormwater management ordinance is they need to submit an inspection and maintenance plan, um, as part of. Um, as part of, uh, complying with that ordinance. So that's the vehicle that, you know, and we review those. So that's part of our, you know, design review process. So, uh, we reviewed those, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The inspection maintenance plan doesn't. Uh, address the ownership and, and, and making sure that it's there for perpetuity, you know, so.
Well, it, it does, it, well, fir- first off, you have to understand who is gonna own it. So they, they need to articulate that to you. Is it gonna be an HOA? Is it gonna be the individual property owner? Once they do that, if. You know, if you, if it's in the hands of an individual property owner, then that, whoever they sell that lot to needs to understand that when they buy it, they own that. They own a substantial, you know, expense because there's a large portion of that development on that side of their development. That's going to that infiltration basin. So my suggestion is that, um, you know, that. And any of those common drainage facilities that other lots depend upon in terms of complying with the stormwater management ordinance probably should be under. Some larger jurisdiction, meaning, you know, an HOA. So if that's what they're proposing, once again, they should present. The HOA documents to the town so that you have a full understanding of that ownership issue. And then one of the things that we do insist on, on the inspection and maintenance plan. Is, um, uh, is to identify the responsible party. So that the town has, you know, a contact to pick up the phone and, you know, come, reach out to the person who owns it. To make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing in terms of the inspection maintenance plan. That's a, that's a, there's annual requirements for inspection, there's annual requirements for maintenance. Um, that's what we're building into all these inspection and maintenance plans, you know, um, as we, as, as they're required under the stormwater management ordinance.
But have you? Have you, have you addressed? Any of that?
So we, we, we just have the last name, we didn't stipulate, it just came, come back to the deception with the county ownership of the road. Town's not gonna take ownership of the road. And most likely these will obviously be under the HOA, we would leave basic one under that law. It'd be under the, it'd be under the HOA.
But how, how are we gonna approve this without knowing who's gonna be the, the responsible party?
Well, that's why I'm suggesting you not approve it yet until you know.
I don't know, I, I understand that, I'm just saying.
We approve the plan, but it would be conditional upon, uh, the ownership of the condition, e- either way you're saying. Um, you guys here, we can't say the town's gonna take ownership.
So you're gonna have to have some kind of HOA to, or some organization to look after the road.
We would ask for the town to take ownership of it, if the development in the second meeting, we have to propose an HOA.
Well, board can't, you know, to accept ownership of the road, you have the town. So you're gonna have to start off as a private company.
Yeah, we're not agreeing with that, so that would be a separate issue. So as far as appealing the plan, we'd like to see approval of the negative condition. Uh, obviously, let's get, if, if we all agree on the abutters' notice, for the others that need to go out. No problem, and then the appeal trigger, the appeal date triggers from that, once the abutters' notices are sent out. Uh, if we need to, we've already, we've been dealing with the weapons, so if there's a concern of identifying where the weapons are and they not be disturbed, all that's been mapped. Going to be aided and surveyed, that's pretty easy to address. And then as far as, again, going back to the HOA or the town adopting the vote. We can address the ownership, the name, the broken utility and stormwater.
Carol, go ahead.
I don't think we can, we can even accept the application as complete until they have the notices out. You know, you can, you can continue the hearing. And I get the notices out right away and, you know, you can.
Town's the town that. Fine, abut. And that's when it's.
I already told you, it's the properties that are touching. But for the road, but for the stream, however, there also was a section in the ordinance. In the, uh, state statute, actually, um, that talks about people who are directly affected. People who are on Mansion Hill. Um, who access their properties from Mansion Hill are directly affected, even though they are not. You know, they're not on the simple, um. Definition of direct abut. But they are directly impacted. And so, um, I can't make, I couldn't make that decision on my own. I'm the planner, I couldn't just say, oh, I know these people are gonna be directly affected, but they have to ask them. They have to make that decision. So, you know, they have made that decision. They agree with her recommendation and we're checking it with your engineer and my engineer. Make sure that we get the people that we think are gonna be directly impacted, even though other people beyond that purview are gonna be directly affected. The amount of the impact is not gonna be the same. I think that the, the rest of the people on Mansion Hill are, are definitely directly affected as the statute would. That would be the comfort for you. So. You know, I'm not gonna go crazy, I'm not gonna notify everybody on Pollard Road and. Eastford Road and, you know, downtown Lincoln, but. Okay?
We also, we did a, a public.
I put it in the paper, right, and then, um. And then I'll, I'll, uh, re-notify.
I would be concerned. You may forget somebody and then they. If you get somebody and say, look, I wasn't aware of this and it does affect me, finally.
Well, they can still bring it up, I mean, they can still, they can still notify that they're directly affected, they have to. Make that argument to you and then you have to decide whether they're correct. Um, but I just described to you who I'm gonna, too. And, yeah, so you just have to make that decision in the finals.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
So can we move on this without having that?
No, we're, we're, we're gonna, but I.
Oh.
We're, I don't think we're ready to accept the application.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so we can.
And the rest of the, your team meeting, uh, team to fit, figure out the other parts that, you know, were still. Near the, to be able to go.
Would like to, uh.
Another presentation.
We have a few, you know, a few letters I'm gonna reference. You know, for the benefit of the applicant, people take some public comment as well. Right, first one.
Oh, and, and, um, uh, OJ can no longer participate.
Okay, so OJ's not gonna participate, so Amy's gonna be seated in case we vote on anything.
No. Are you okay if I do that? I'm here, so keep an eye on.
See if the.
Thank you. He's incapacitated at this time. No, he's sent to the rest.
He's on him?
Um, he's incapacitated.
Oh. Okay.
I am, so let's see, so we have a letter, Craig Santos, thirty-four Mansion Hill driver, asked to be treated as an abut. Paulman Wendy Tanner, thirty-two Mansion Hill driver, asked to be treated as a, considered a abut. See, Gary. Cassino and Denise Rashi, Cassino, Nine Valley, Buleane, they're asked to be considered as abutters. The letter. Frank. Perchudo.
Perchudo.
Perchudo, he's, uh, submitted some comments, so those will be attached into the minutes out of the public record. And with that, I entertain a motion to open public comment.
So move. Okay.
Okay, Paul made the motion, Joe second, all in favor? Hi, anyone close? Public comment's open. Back with the mask.
Hi, Susan Dorian, just a, a quick, an interesting thing, I also sent an email, please consider that as an abut. For thirty-five Mansion Hill ride. It happened down, maybe that I, maybe it was my junk mail, maybe it was, um, did you email it to me? I emailed it to, um. Um, yeah, planningboard at Lincolnany.org.
So just planning.
Or planning at Lincolnany.
Okay, but it's, it's okay, we're gonna, we're expanding the abutters', abutters' list, so you're gonna be, get a notice out.
Okay, how do you spell your last name? Dorian, D-O-R-A-N. Okay.
Get one from her, Carol?
I think I did.
You don't have it, but that's.
I think it's, uh, I think I saw it when I went to get something else, I think. It's somebody that I like to see. Okay. Anyway. It did come in, but I, it came in after I was already in here.
Okay. Ma'am, it's in fact.
Yes, Amy, it's silly. Um, I would like to be considered as an abut. Because I am affected within two ways. Number one, the traffic, it has been conflicted up with a floodboard. Twenty years. On Pollard Road. And number two, he said, Brook, which in my youth named Cleveland's Mountain Brook, is. Runs right along with my whole entire property and my dad's property. Which I decided upon the corner, has a junction with Eastford, Pollard Road, and Mansion Hill traffic. So I would like to be considered as an abut because it does affect me, okay?
I don't think anyone understands. Carol, would you consider her on the list anyway, she's right there?
Yep. She's right across, right in the corner. She's kind of across from where the station is coming. Agony is on.
And I don't know the corner.
I'm looking across, you're through, you said, on the opposite side of Pollard?
Yeah, right.
These facilities. Considering. All the good work, like, I mean, I guess we'd open it up to the outside Pollard.
Oh, Mr. Dorian.
Yeah. Yeah.
So that, if someone else finds out, you know, we have to be doing this again, right? We have to keep coming back if it's sort of wants to be an abut. That's right, right, wind and stop, you know? And then I, I think, if they're not here tonight, then, you know, I mean, I don't wanna keep having, well, but I mean, I can understand all of your concern. But then another neighbor, just my neighbor, he comes out next, so I won't be at, I mean, we just keep, we keep the same open, you know?
Well, Carol's gonna make, you know, draw, figure out the boundaries, I mean, I think, Paul?
You have two people on Zoom.
Okay.
I am affected because when there was issues with our neighbor, they had water flowing right up to their, probably living room floor. I went to, with Spurbag, who was the town manager at the time, had a slugfest meeting and I told him about an old rock that had got blocked off. Because. Of the, because of the side. Um, and through doing that, I think, or I hope it helps the neighbors somewhat, but. That property, that, that rock goes right through my entire property and my dad's property, right? We are very similar.
Well, I just get a couple of Zoom questions. All right.
Maybe we can have a conversation with, um, Ray when we're figuring out, make sure we get people back.
All right, John Kimball, you have a question?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
You can hear me?
Yeah, please state your name.
Uh, John Kimball, Nine White Birch Lane, resident? Can you hear me?
I can hear you, go ahead, sir.
Okay, uh, I'd like to go back to the previous discussion about the wetlands' impact of the drainage down by the community center. Uh, there was a discussion about the, uh, Forest Ridge development, and I'm not really sure the particulars of that. Uh, was that a multi-phase project that was approved?
If we're talking about Forest Ridge, it's just multi-phase.
I think it was planned phase.
Planned phase development.
Okay, so when that was approved, that was approved that incremental, uh, stages were already gonna be acceptable, correct?
Yes.
Okay, does that trump? The potential impact of the, uh, White Birch Lane development? Because we mentioned that, uh. Any future development on Forest Ridge could impact the amount of waterfall or the. Runoff that wa- reaches down by the community center. Uh, and I don't wanna see the town run into a legal action where we go ahead and approve this subdivision. And later on try to prohibit development of Forest Ridge if it already had conditional approval.
I mean, Forest Ridge is already, you know, already approved, they have to commit every phase for a subdivision and site plan. If we approve this, we're able to cut Forest, Forest, Forest Ridge down, is that your question?
Yeah, what I'm saying is, uh. This can't negatively impact what was approved for Forest Ridge, is that a true statement?
As far as Forest Ridge, I don't, as Forest, Forest Ridge, not be able to build any more units or buildings?
Yes.
Right, Forest Ridge is approved on their own merits and this will have to be approved or disproved on the merit.
Okay, uh, the next question is, uh, when I look at the. Uh, lot sizes and the discussion that there isn't gonna be much yard and there's gonna be driveways. Uh, when you clear off that much area at the top of the hill, there's a significant amount of water that comes down through that area already. The houses located lower than that development. Probably don't have any water intrusion into their basements existing at this time. What provisions or protections are gonna be afforded the existing landowners if this development runs? More water down to where they now have. A new problem that didn't exist prior to this development?
So they have to follow the stormwater management plan, which. Stipulates that post-development runoff will not exceed pre-development runoff.
Okay, how, but I, what happens if it does? What the individual homeowners are gonna be impacted by this? That they didn't have an issue before? Is the provisions gonna be provided in here to compensate, uh, the existing homeowners to take in? Uh, basically waterproof their basements that they didn't have to do before this?
Paul, I mean, I would think, I would think because it's gonna be a phased project. That if there were issues, you would not, you would notice it maybe after the first phase or the second phase, you know, and then you would be able to address each future phase based on that.
Is that something that can be factored into the overall proposal that's gonna be out there? So we're not reacting? We already have a plan ahead of time on how to address it?
I mean, I don't think we can force someone to pave the waterproof basement, if that's your question.
Okay. The. First two and a half hours of tonight's meeting dealt with. Uh, short-term rentals and. Joe brought up a very elegant point that, uh, there's very little land available in the town of Lincoln to develop for. Workforce housing. Yet here we are, two available parcels that may be able to be used for first, uh. For, uh, workforce housing are now being split up into small segments. Uh, that are basically gonna be individual homes with some duplexes. And we just eliminated the ordinance change that may have prevented these from becoming new. VRBOs, Airbnbs, et cetera. Um. Is this really in the best interest of the town of Lincoln to approve this type of a development? Or do we need to draw a line in the sand and say enough is enough? We need to have workforce housing as a priority and take and review these two sites and any additional sites for that impact.
There's a prerogative to submit an application and we evaluate whether it conforms to the ordinance, we can't. We can't tell them to withdraw their application and submit something else.
But are you bound to approve it even though it's submitted?
No, there's no, there's no guarantee that it'll be approved or rejected, we're, you know, we're just taking the information now.
We have to have good reason.
Yeah. Yeah, we have to have reason to deny it.
Okay. Also, right now, existing on Mansion Hill, uh Valley View and White Birch Lane is a fair amount of foot traffic. Uh, not necessarily from the people that are living there, as much as it is for the people that are staying down in the condominium area. And with this new development, is there gonna be any requirement that a sidewalk be created along the existing roadways to handle the increased pedestrian traffic?
What's that? We can ask a question.
Yeah, we didn't show any, we'll do existing sidewalks now, and we're expanding the roads. So if they were sidewalks now, then that would make sense, but now there's no sidewalks, you know? So we, they go nowhere, so you're, doesn't make sense.
Okay, you asked a question.
Yeah, that's why we.
Well, he should talk to the town, if he thinks that the town owns the road.
Yeah, that's a question, you know, ask the municipality if they want to construct sidewalks.
The town owns the road.
Right.
And the last question, last, the last question is, have the existing roads been evaluated to can be able to handle year-round, heavy-duty equipment uh traffic that's gonna be associated with not only the development, but the construction and maintenance of these facilities?
That's why we would consider a bond.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's one of the reasons to consider a bond.
Consider a bond, you know, to protect any taxpayers from that.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah. Yeah, uh, Matthew. State your name for the record, please.
Sure, Matthew Leidner, Seventy-Five Manor Drive, I'm a direct butter to the project. Um, thank you for taking my comments tonight, it's very much appreciated. If I share my screen to point to some things on the plan, can, is there a screen there that you can see what I'm pointing to?
Try it.
Yeah.
I'll try it. If not, we'll, we'll go Plan B. Can you see my screen, it pulled up a plan?
Yeah.
It says you have, you have.
Takes a minute.
Okay, all right, great, um, if it ends up being laggy or whatnot, I can stop. But basically, um, I live in a lot on Manor Drive, which is in the Mansion Hill condominium complex just to the west of this proposed development. And um it's just on the, the left, left side of the page here is where Mansion Hill is. So um my concern is very specific, um, but in my opinion, significant. Uh, and that concern uh deals with this infiltration basin that here that's proposed in the southwest corner of the project. It's called Basin One Point One on the, the plan. Um, so it's one of these large infiltration basins that's been discussed um during the presentation tonight. And uh it's located at the top of, relative to where I live, it's on top of um a slope, it's uphill from our development. And what hasn't been talked about tonight, so I've, I've heard discussion about, you know, the drainage going to the brook on Pollard toward the community center. And that may be the case ultimately, but what hasn't been talked about is that the, the outlet, the outfall from this infiltration basin is actually aimed directly into Mansion Hill and Manor Drive, Mansion Hill Condos um property. And so it may eventually, and would, would get to the bottom of the hill, but it's, it's by way of another private development and, and our drainage infrastructure, which is not set up to handle this, this change in drainage pattern. So um this, this proposed basin is looking at their drainage watershed map. Uh, would take uh the, the extended part of Mansion Hill Drive, the roadway itself, and then much of the drainage from the lots that are proposed at the end of Mansion Hill Drive, um, including the rooftop runoff, the driveways and then the yard areas that are being created. And um so, taking kind of a step back here, and, and what was presented by the engineer tonight is that they meet the stormwater requirement in that the flow that crosses the property line in the proposed condition is not increased from the existing condition. And so that, that may be true um overall, um, but what that doesn't take into account is that the characteristics of that flow in the proposed are much different. And what I mean by that is, in the existing condition, the water from this hillside, some of the water in some of the hillside does in fact flow into our property, I, I don't dispute that. There's so that part of the existing site does flow into our property, uh, and we take that water on today. But it sheet flows onto our property from the hillside across hundreds of feet of length of the property line. So it's very distributed, um, where in the proposed condition, the flow across that property line per the calculations may not be increased, but it's, it's being funneled into one point. So um at that point, the flow is certainly being increased significantly uh from what, what discharges over that point today. And so um that's my concern. Furthermore, if you look at their watershed areas from the existing to the proposed condition, the, the way that they're grading the, the proposed development and the lots, that um they're taking more water over to our property line in the proposed condition significantly, uh, more area of drainage over to our property line than goes there today. So if you look at, I calculated it, they're increasing the watershed that runs into our property by about sixty-two percent. Granted that some of that area does get um routed through this detention and infiltration basin, but then it dumps into our property. So what I mean by that is their, their grading scheme takes areas that don't currently flow into our property, and they're bringing them to our property. Um, so that's, that's a change, that's a major change. Another point I want to make is that the, the calculations that they present in their stormwater analysis factor in that this basin would be infiltrating under ideal conditions. So um if it's constructed properly, maybe that would be the case initially, but uh somebody brought up tonight, I, I think there was some discussion about, well, who ultimately maintains this basin? And how do we ensure that it actually does get maintained? Because if it's not maintained, or it's poorly maintained over time, that infiltration capacity can decrease. And then if that happens, more and more water gets discharged from the basin instead of going back into the ground. Another, another example is what if, what if you get a rainstorm in the wintertime, which happens? And the ground is frozen, or the ground is snow-covered, and you get two inches of rain, or three inches of rain, or any amount of rain, and it can't infiltrate because the ground is frozen. So all that water now, from a bigger watershed, is now coming right into our development. Um, so that's, that's my concern. So, but even in, like I said, even in a best-case scenario where everything's working properly and, and working per the design calculations, we're funneling water that sheet flows across this long property line and funneling it down to, to one point. And that water, you don't see it on this plan, uh, because none of the, you know, Manor Drive and none of the buildings on our side of the property line, and, and none of the abutting houses for that matter seem to be shown on this plan. But that water, it might be one thing if when that water came onto the, you know, our property in this case, it was in, in a remote corner of our property, and it went into maybe a wetland or a waterway and, and just got taken out of there. But this, this is gonna be dumping right into a land, you know, our land, our sort of our maintained area, our landscaped area, right onto Manor Drive. Um, it's just not, we're not set up to take this kind of point source of flow the, into our development. Um, so my, I guess my concern is, is from my interest is, you know, if this ends up getting built this way and causes issues on our side of the property line, then it's gonna cost me money, you know, in, in that I pay home uh, uh, you know, home, home, home or association costs. And we're gonna have to, as an association, deal with, with repairing, whether it's a slope gets washed out, or roadway gets damaged, or icing occurs because we have more water running out into our street. Um, I may have to incur a cost, and you know, the, the tricky part with this type of issue is that it could issue, uh, an issue could, you know, rise up a ye- a year from now, or it may be twenty years from now, and then we get that storm that occurs, it's a perfect storm and creates an issue on, in our property that would not have otherwise occurred. So um, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a tricky issue to deal with, but nonetheless, it's an issue. And um it, you know, it could definitely cause um us to have to spend money in, in repairs and, and maintenance on our side of the property line. So I guess the questions I have at this point are, you know, just, I guess fundamentally, is it appropriate for a new project's drainage to be sort of like point source discharged into an abutting property without any type of, of easement? Um, there's no, I don't, I don't believe there's any drainage easement, I don't believe anyone spoke into our, I don't want to speak on behalf of our HOA, but I don't think anybody's spoken to them or approached them about any type of easement um to, to create this stormwater outfall into our property. Um, you know, what, and I think this was raised maybe by some other folks tonight, but what, what type of assurance is there that this basin will be maintained long-term? And I know there's been some discussion on who, who's ultimately gonna own and maintain this basin. So I mean, it takes private lot drainage, but it also takes roadway drainage. So, you know, if the town is up accepting the roadway, and, and the basin's on one of the proposed private lots. So if the town takes ownership and maintenance of the basin, it's on a private lot. So how, you know, how would that be worked out? Um, and I guess, althi- you know, ultimately, my question is, can the designer look at the design of this basin? And is there a way to direct the outfall from this basin elsewhere? Or, or even tie it into an existing, if, I don't know if there's existing drainage infrastructure in Mansion Hill Drive that the outfall would, could be tied into, I'm not saying that's a good or bad idea, but I don't know if that's been looked at. Um, but is there some other way to direct this, this outfall other than into our, um, our property? And if so, then that could, this concern would completely go away if that were directed elsewhere. So um that's my number one concern with this basin. Um, secondary concern also with this basin is that southwest corner of the property, uh, as you can see on the plan here, they're, in order to build that basin, they're proposing to clear right up to the property line, both against our, our property and the, uh, abutting property at the end of Mansion Hill Drive. I don't want to speak for them, but speaking for our property on the west side there, um, you know, this basin, as I mentioned, is gonna be up on top of a, on top of a slope relative to our development. And then they're building up a berm on top of that to form the basin. We're gonna be looking at an outfall pipe and a riprap emergency spillway that are aimed right into our street. And so um, you know, whether that stays there or gets redirected, if the, if the basin ends up being there and the, the trees are cleared right up to the property line in that corner, I would request that the planning board consider conditioning the, any approval of this project on the developer planting a, a dense row of evergreen screening in that corner of the property to help um, just to help screen it a bit. And that any planting, that the, a size of the, the trees be specified at the time of planting, some reasonable size, you know, eight to ten feet or something like that, um, so they're not tiny when they're, they're planted. Um, and that's my comments, so thank you for, for hearing me.
Comments, both. Water on the land.
Yeah, I did, so we, Ray, I spoke uh last night, um, talked about, he was talking about how we're going to have more area in the proposed condition than existed in head that way. So we're gonna look at that, and then talk, Ray, we'll look at that, see if we can reduce that amount of area that could be there. He also makes a very good point, but again, we are reducing the volume and the peak to that property line. But again, we are concentrating it, so right, again, this is for now, we'll, we'll look at it, maybe it may constitute talking with them over there about the drainage, so it's not just daylighted for the property, so we'll have, we'll have to look at about our solution now, but, but points we'll take.
I heard his point about the screening.
I did, it, I, I looked at the green plan, and we were trying to obviously maximize that information base, you probably get it much in the ground. So if you provide screening, now you're shrinking the size of the basin, so it's, yeah, kind of productive on that, probably look at that.
Sir, would you name again for the record?
Yeah, I'm Paul Schurwoller with uh, the Churn Street, Pollard, so although not, well, directly affected, you have a dry basement now, and all that water, you know, runs down. So I mean, like you said, at the end, there's that creek, that's a, that's a, I guess, that's the end of White Birch. I don't know if there's ever been any maintenance done on that, or any analysis other than like, hey, this is it, you know? I think that's now, I don't think there has been, and I don't think there's ever been. Old hook place.
Yeah.
So, and then the other, and then the other comment is, you know, in the fall, the migratory meat geese, you know, they land right there, right here. So, I'm not sure if there's any federal laws on migratory wetlands or anything like that, but should be looked into. Definitely in the HOA.
So?
Now, Brooke running down, town used to maintain and clear it right up from one end to the other. But with the new DES regulation, they don't let it send anymore.
Okay, so there you go, well, that, that doesn't sound like you did that.
The town is doing the buck load, the rest one end of the other, see it right out. Later to be done in forty years, because of the year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, sir, what's your name for the record?
Uh, Brian Holle, uh, Twenty-Three Hemlock, and a resident of Lincoln as of last year. Um, I'm uh here as a representative of New Jefferson Holdings in Forest Ridge.
Okay.
Uh, one of the owners of that. And just want to have you reiterate for the public record that regardless of your approval or disapproval of this project, it has no impact on the already approved lots we have in Forest Ridge.
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure that it, it enters the notes of the public record.
Yeah, thank you, so I know it.
Thanks.
In the fact, what's your name, sir?
Gene Heaney.
Oh, you came up.
Sorry, Gene. Mansion Hill Drive, so he, Mansion Hill and By Valley View Lane. I can barely hear you.
Oh.
Eugene Heaney.
Yeah.
Uh, I own a house in Mansion Hill Drive, and By Valley View Lane. And the two guys that spoke before there about the water issue, like I see water coming down that hill, pouring into the water on the top of the hill. And uh now they're gonna add uh six, seven houses up at the top. I used to build houses, I used to develop, that's what I said back in the day. You're up that dirt at the top there, and to get out, you're gonna have all one. Houses that will be done, bottom, they'll be, they'll be all taped house, they're gonna be that horse. That's the few. People, pop. Drop drivers, more water down here. The water. Fire, fire the cap. If the fire department, if there's a fire, say up at the top of Mansion Hill Drive, how does the fire engine get up there and turn around, there's nowhere, should be a commissar there, so they can't turn around? This is a, that scene over in Bayview. Then over in White Birch, that road goes right down, it didn't come right up, the fire road stopped, we came, there's no exit quite there. So, just ever a fire in there, and the fire cap, and then all the birds to be, that's getting there, I'll be turned around. I was never allowed with that, you know, we always had to put a commissar.
Say that, Paul, you have to ask?
The fire, the, the town fire chief has, has to approve these plans. So before, before they can go forward to, they'll have to look at it as far as the size of the vehicle, see what they have up there, whether they can turn around. So just like, it, it, it's not just, they present something, and fire chief doesn't see it. The fire chief takes a look at it and says, yea, yea, nay, we, you know, we need a ladder truck up there, we can't turn it around, so we need, you know, we need to address that, so.
Yeah, they did run that, we put five trucks on that, and they had to alter those for them, they didn't want that contact.
Right, I didn't know that would have.
Just that one hammerhead, the fire truck, one time, present location, yeah. They extend the road up, they'll have to have a hammerhead, be able to turn the vehicles around. Now be inspected, we'll be, we'll find. The device you made.
It's the same with this, we just didn't move it.
Pretty narrow.
Which regulations are you looking at? Nate, uh, Nate Hathaway tells me that it's the same as New Hampshire DOT. They've been superseded by the state.
Let's make, can you make a note and have?
I am, is there a question?
Yeah, there was question about, uh, the the width of the roads.
Which road? Okay, what's the question?
Okay, so the, there's also, according to Nate Hathaway, our work director. We're supposed to be using the DOT road standards. So, is twenty feet wide the state road standard?
Twenty feet wide is the town standard in terms of the roadway width, that's that's articulated in your regs. As far as the DOT standard is concerned, what what applies is the roadway construction, so basically the pavement structure. So, um, and they and they do comply with that, so for example, you know, I. Correct me if I'm wrong, Keith, but I think what they're proposing is twelve inches of gravel, six inches of crushed gravel. Uh, and then I think three or three and a half inches of pavement, so that structure meets the DOT, meets DOT standard. The materials that they're calling for and they're specifying are DOT standards. So, the road does meet DOT standards, as far as the roadway width, that would be governed by your local ordinance. Um, not necess- not, not the DOT, the DOT puts in interstates and state highways, so. Those roadway widths wouldn't apply here.
Twenty feet wide, wide enough for two cars to pass each other?
Yeah, the minimum standard on a roadway typically is eighteen, we don't recommend you go eighteen, but I believe in your regulations, you allow a twenty foot. You can, you can ask for more, I mean, you don't have to settle for twenty, but again, now you're adding impervious surfaces, you're increasing the. Amount of runoff coming off of the development, et cetera, et cetera, so there's, you know, pros and cons to that. I'm not, Keith, do you remember how many houses, how many units were down at, uh, on that end? Was it a dozen? Eighteen units, so, yeah, so it's, it's, it's eighteen lots, twenty foot wide roadway, um, it's a dead end street. You're not gonna have a high volume of traffic going that, down that street and, um, you're not, people aren't gonna be driving exceptionally fast.
In the, uh, in the wetland, on on the right side, say, going down and, that happens if you wanna. Put street lighting in there or sidewalks, future, no room for any, it's just, that's it.
Yeah, we have twenty foot wide, then we have, that's a travel lane, then we have the.
And like we talked before, we weren't, already included in the twenty?
Yeah, the K car arms, I think they're, go back to the container, might be a foot wide, so, yeah, so that'd be twenty two for.
In the back?
Yeah, uh, Harold Beard, and I live on, uh, fifteen dollar U A. Does the developer have any previous projects that you could show the town? Also, is the town? How is the town gonna oversee this project? Do they even supervise? Are they, who does the inspection for the town?
We have, we have two, uh, code enforcement officers, the assistants of the town engineer that will oversee. That is, that is built according to plan.
According to plan, but according to?
Right, according to their standards, you know, standards in this plan.
Standards in that plan.
Right, I mean, any of this won't get approval unless it meets our standards. And then the code enforcement gentleman with the, uh, assist- assistance of the town engineer. Will ensure that they can pull on for what's been approved.
And the, uh, previous projects?
Yeah, I built, uh, probably four million square feet of, you know, you know, if you look at any Firestone Tire Facilities and New England, I, I built them. Uh, we just finished Taco Bell, Bangor Main, and that's a million square feet. Got thirty-six lot development going on in Massachussetts, we just did an eleven. Lot development and, uh, we're breaking it on now, April. This, this project's gonna be built as a town standard, we're gonna take a lot of pride in it. I planned a home, a personal home up there as well as my brother, we're gonna put a lot of time and effort into this. Outdoor person, I grew up in New Hampshire, I ski, I snowboard, bike, mountain bikes, and this event's gonna be a, uh.
Frank?
Sure, I, I know I submitted a letter, but I. So, in, in general, just, I wanna make a comment, and I know that I put a letter, but. See, a lot of people agree, it's, you know, it has nothing to do with planning board, but I. Do you wanna say that I think the lot configuration, uh, freedom, bizarre? Um, and I know it's to get the square footage in there. So, they can maximize the amount of building that they. It also doesn't take into characterization of the neighborhood, these are all single family homes. There are residents that work in the town or they retired and they're full time residents, I don't think anyone's renting up there, if they are, it's long term. Um, and the duplexes that they're planning to build are pretty much such. We know that that's a target for potentially short term. But, that's not your concern, but it is one of my concerns. You know, and I, I really don't feel that the, the land itself is, is appropriate for the kind of development that they have. I mean, that, it's great, the foot trails are great to go in there, but for the big amount of, um, over development, it's not. And you get to Ray, and he and I have not talked, but, um, when I have things I do want, I'm skipping ahead here for everyone. That land absorbs an enormous amount of water, it holds it and slowly retains it for sometimes weeks. After storms, you can go up there and water is slowly tricking through where the muddy areas and. I understand you, you find where they are here, but I would invite someone to just walk up there and take a look at what goes on. It's incredible the amount of water that stays and slowly comes goes into that stream that's down. And I share raised concerns as you start to interrupt that, this giant sponge that sits there today that we wanna. Ignore, cause it's just back there and no one knows about it. Um, other than those people that enjoy walking through it, I think that's gonna have a negative impact on a lot of the homeowners. That abut that water way. And then periodically overflows. Um, I think the, I I stated in here, I don't mean to be so bold, but in the Stormwater Management Program, ordinance. Um, the board has the right to do several things, ask for a formal plan, and and I think we should. Do that, I, given the past history of the issues on Long Pollard, and I think the board. Should retain a third party, registered professional engineer, um, independent of what you're doing and not, has no criticism, but you. Want it to work a certain way and and get this through. And given all the issues that you've seen before, maybe a third party which the ordinance requires the developer to. Pay fair the cost for it.
Ray, who is gonna, is gonna review that, the town engineer, just, you know?
He shares some of the concerns I do with the, with that, I think, I think it should be in this state, national state person. Also during it, uh, when planning board in July, uh, the planning board was, and it was addressed, um, to the issue of the homeowners association. It really needs to be nailed down as to whether there is one, is it enforced, that I don't think the plan's complete right now. No one has, those decisions haven't been made. Um, I think the, that that's a big concern, and I don't think you should approve the plan without knowing what's going on. Um, and, you know, the idea that it becomes. Town road again, that's something that has to be after, after the fact, and I think they need to have. Whoever until that time, there needs to be responsibility for the sewers and these, I understand you're using these, um. Gr- grinders, you know, pumps, now I. Hopefully, they have on the ground electricity, so that's good, but no electricity goes out, they're not, that, that, those aren't gonna work. Um, they do hold water, don't get me wrong, but I don't, hopefully, it's not super intense on that.
Yeah, yeah, there's obviously, uh, certain storage there, but if the power goes out, I mean, what it is on my head, but. There is a, you know, storage there for, you know, the power as well, so.
So, while they're individual, I do think it's important that the homeowners, if it's a homeowners association. Um, while each individual, unit owner, I don't know how that, and I don't. How the septic, uh, seeming sewer lines under the, uh, the force. Force main, um, works and with the town assumes it, even obviously. That's, I didn't realize until tonight that that's something that's gonna be bothering the town, unlikely to happen. So, I do wonder about what's gonna happen if there's issues with that system. And I guess I'm hearing you say, well, it's gonna be individual unit owners, but what's the common pipe? You're gonna need a homeowners association, I don't know how that's gonna work and that there really should be, um, I think. Some sort of bonding or escrow that is required on, uh, this project to make sure that there's ones there that care of it. Um, I've been hearing you, and the stuff apply for alteration of frame permanent. Um, I am concerned about project being implemented without everything getting approved, um, prior to it. And to a certain extent, I hope the board doesn't approve anything until all required, things are in place, including a storm. Stormwater bond is in place, I think that there should be, um, a sub- subdivision performance bond in place. I am also concerned about any, that this project takes on, is if this is not a small project. Um, there's lots of, you know, things that need to happen, you know, in stormwater management. I'm concerned about the resources that the developer may have to complete the project, I hate to see that this land is. Disrupted and then there's no way to complete it, that's a real problem, and so I. I really feel that the board should require that the infrastructure be built, I hear it's in phase. Cause we pause as well, um, but a phased construction and. I would ask that the infrastructure before any homes are built, it's complete. And not done at the same, get to see where there's, you're starting construction on a building, the road isn't complete, get to that. Um, that, that concerns me, um, that. Project may not get completed and. Those are paraphrasing most of our. And I, I guess my last thing, you said, there is a, in the town strategic plan, they have a, the goal to identify, preserve and detect the natural environment of Lincoln. Um, and they have strategies of identifying, preserve and protect, um. The, uh, environments of Lincoln, providing access where feasible, identify protective flood plains, steep, slow areas. Protect them, protect them for wildlife, that's, this is something that, there isn't much left in the town where the community, and this has. Entire community has had access to this land, and it abuts thirteen acres of other, I think it's conservation easements or something. Um, this property abuts that, people right now can freely get to that, and it's something that's going. By way of the, I don't know, mongoose or something, um, and it's, it's unfortunate. And it seems to be that the strategic plan in town would support this land not be.
Anyone else? Ma'am?
Yes, my name's Cheryl Yui, and I'm the president of the Mansion Hill condo association. And I have to say, the density of this project, as I, I was reading it, this is proposal two, we haven't even talked about. Proposal one, which is much less density, but all the factors that have been brought up about this land and the slope are quite correct. That slope that's at the top of Manor Drive where that spillway is gonna come, and that water really is gonna drain. Onto our driveway, which is our main road, which I already have an issue with drainage there. That road is gonna cost us a hundred thousand dollars to rip up, correct the color, and make it right, okay? So, we're, we're doing well, well with it now, we've done what we can to keep it going, but this is a direct. Egress for the water off that hill. This summer, that hill was like a sponge. And up in Forest Ridge, I had gone up to look at some air conditioning units and things like that, the land was like a sponge. All the water, and you take the trees out and you put in concrete and you put in, uh, your driveways. All you're asking for is a big spillway, this water running down that hill into these neighbors, their properties. They try to do water mitigation to keep their cellars dry. The bottom of Mansion Hill, when you come around where the new police station going, is going in. And you approach Pollard Road at that stop sign, often that piece of land is underwater in these big rain events. So, we're talking about the brooks, we're talking about this wetland, and the wetland is the filtration. Of our environment, of the water we drink, of the air we breathe, you start destroying that. And you're asking for another major problem, we already have a problem with what the neighbors have said about all the water around the community center. So, maybe this development, you know, gets approved, but I think it needs to be looked at and it's in Normandy. If what the guy wants is a couple houses for him and his family, then let him build them. But why now? We're all gonna be, you know, put out by their overdevelopment of something, ruining wetlands. Not taking care of proper drainage. And this morning, with rain that came down, that one place right where that water wants to come out was a, a. A torrent of rain. I wish I'd done now with my phone and shown you what was going on, because. The way the rain came down this summer, and the way it's come down with all these storms this winter on the frozen ground. More thought has to be put in this project. That's all I have to say.
Uh, yes, uh, I am Jerry, Cas, I know, sorry, I'll just stand up so I can stretch a little bit. Um, at C A S I N G H I N O, I reside full time at Nine Valley. I know this isn't really a full public hearing because the application wasn't being completed yet, so, thank you for the public. I think there are several problems with this project, which are such as currently proposed, warrant. Ultimate rejection of this plan, its entirety by this board, for several reasons that were already stated by several individuals. I just wanted to take a moment to speak about a couple of those things, would it be all right if I stepped over and pointed to a diagram over here? I'll, I'll just take a minute. Thank you. So, referring to, uh. Scene three oh two, which is slightly on. Yes, uh, this shows the Coolidge. So, at the top of value lane, which is where I reside, there's a few lots up the street where we currently have a dead end. Um, there's this proposal that there be three duplexes. Right referred to the configuration of the lots um as being somewhat unusual. Um, that certainly is a figure to understatement when you look at these three lots. If you look closely, the design actually almost looks like something out of Star Wars or something. There's these odd slices of land that are. Attached to lots like over here that go all the way over there just to provide the minimum. Square footage that's required for duplex over there. To get that square footage, they take what's really a, really a very undersized lot and they add. This area right here going all the way down there. You probably couldn't even walk three people side by side there. It's not really part of that lot in any meaningful manner. Same thing applies with this one in the middle lot nine. Um, to get the required square footage for duplex, they had to attach a piece below that going all the way down here. And then lot ten isn't quite as bad, but that also includes this hole right here to get the square footage required. The duplexes that they're proposing are very small. Um, and they touch the setback line requirements in at least two of these three areas. The dimensions for this one, for example, are fifty feet. Wide thirty feet deep. Um, so half of that is twenty-five feet by thirty feet, so it's like seven hundred and fifty square feet on one floor. Um, and bear in mind that has to include the overhang on the side, so really the structure itself, the interior of the structure might be. Five hundred and fifty, six hundred square feet on the first floor. It's out of character with the neighborhood. It's gonna look terrible. It's gonna be a complete eyesore. These houses will be about ten yards from each other. Actually, that's about right because. Uh, sorry, thirty yards, thirty yards from each other, cause you've got a fifteen foot setback there, fifteen foot setback there and they're right on the edge. So. Yeah, that'd be thirty feet, thirty, thirty six, ten yards. Sorry, my math is not working right now. So, yeah, ten yards. Very short distance. Uh, right on top of each other. Um, and I don't know if any's been, if any's, but anybody's been up to the top of Valley View Lane lately, but. It's an extremely sharp angle at the top of Valley View Lane where it dead ends near Tony Drew Post House, something right. Um, in fact, I understand that when Mansion Hill Drive was, was till, excuse me, Valley View Lane was built and some of you will probably remember this. Um, that it goes back quite a ways. It was, the, the ground was much higher and they had to dig way down to, to create Valley View Lane to buy. Uh, like Tony Drew Post House at the end of Valley View Lane, right, is so much higher. So if you look at the top of Valley View Lane, you have a very steep incline, probably. Thirty percent, forty percent grade. Um, water runoff coming down and very significant. They're proposing a very narrow driveway with a twelve foot entrance for three areas. It's gonna consume the whole end of the road. That's just that area. Similar issues exist regarding sort of the ported. Configuration of the lots on the other subdivision. You've got basically houses that consume. Within setback areas, almost all the lot other than that, which is wetlands. So people's entire yards virtually except for the area in front of their house, the fifteen, fifteen feet, I guess it is in some cases, sometimes more. Is all consumed by wetlands. So you've got streams in people's backyards, you've got wetlands all over the place. More than fifty percent of some of these lots are consumed by wetlands. Uh, this one here, for example, with lot sixteen, the other subdivision. The driveway goes all the way, way to the back of the lot, squeezing the house and there's a huge wetland area right here. So. Uh, and we have an enormous slope coming down behind. Uh, this area here, which is the back of Valley View Lane. Lot of water out there, a lot of water out here, a lot, and basically you have swamp back there and streams and uh, a lot of water. So I think that what, what this developer is doing is. Uh, with all due respect, not really something environmentally friendly at all. Um, in fact, it's quite the opposite. The current plan, I believe, really is something designed to take advantage of every possible square foot. To squeeze a lot in wherever and however possible, uh, rather than doing something more sensible. These parcels can be developed. Even though the property was on the market for about twenty years without anybody developing it. And there's a reason for that, I suggest, because it's not really suitable for this type of developer. That's why it took so long for that property to sell. But somebody owns it now. They, they can develop things, but they should be developing responsibly. They shouldn't be trying to squeeze as much as possible into this land. And, and destroy the environment in doing it. Thank you.
Oh, pleasure to talk.
Okay, go on.
Kristen Blaze, seventy-two Mansion Hill Drive. I will directly be impacted by this quite substantially. I currently just. Uh, two years ago did my landscaping as my house is pretty new. Um, and spent upwards of twenty thousand dollars and I have a dry basement currently and I have huge concerns that that's gonna change. With all of the houses being developed. And I also have questions about the access road that's gonna go from Mansion Hill to Valley View and. What that's gonna look like, how that's gonna work, how people are gonna actually even be able to access it, what the grade will be. All of the above, and I wanna thank everybody that has spoken and I agree with a hundred percent of all of your concerns tonight.
I took a question about the access road. Yeah, so which point are you talking about? Do you get the Valley View?
Where it will go from Mansion Hill to Valley View, kind of. The proposed road that it's gonna go into connects the two trees.
We're not, they're two independent, they don't.
It's like a through road.
No, we have, we have limits at the end of Mansion Hill Drive where it limits at the end of Valley View, they're not connected. There's no road.
Cause I know they're in the town lane, there is. There, there is proposed. Yes.
Yeah, those are driveways to those two lots, yes. Those are drive, personal driveways.
But it would be for my house.
Which house? Are you the answer to this one right here?
I said the top blue one. Yeah.
Yeah, so yeah, so that's the shared driveway that would come out. Mansion Hill, that would be lot six and lot seven.
What would be the grade of that driveway?
Uh, I can follow the plan. I know we meet all the requirements for roadway and driveway requirements. I have to hold the bound, remember what the slope is, but we have to meet the requirements on slopes.
How's it about you having to go all the way from Mansion Hill over to Valley View to the two houses?
No, no, just go, it just means, it just means this lot six, lot seven, this block blocks. The driveway just comes out, just like, doesn't connect to Valley View.
No, I mean, it doesn't connect, but it goes to the two houses, the two duplexes that were up there?
They'd sit, they'd, you sit behind those duplexes, that would be the end of Valley View.
And it will be, we, I'm kidding, won't we start that driveway?
Sandwich, uh, come back here.
Yeah, on that driveway.
Actually, it's pretty flat, I don't know if it's slow, but you're on the scale. This is a sleeper here, but no, there's no retaining, won't we go along that?
They're gonna peel the driveway right before my house.
That very, that beats the law. Yes, that beats the law. If we try to talk for a while.
Set profit problem is coming in. My virgin, it's in them. They're gonna get up in them.
Lost me again at the end of it.
So the end of Valley View is gonna be proposed three houses, three duplexes at the end of Valley View.
Three duplexes.
Three duplexes.
Yes. Right, oh. Three duplexes at the top of Valley View.
Okay, deal with the neighborhood.
Yeah, but we have, it's, I mean, we're following again, following the, you know. And we're going. And the top, so I mean, it's, it allows duplexes.
You know, how much you come to the board, sure. Sure. Just for not. You need to go, perhaps examine the advocate, please.
The uh, the duplexes, how are you spending with the neighborhood? Now to you.
They're allowed for the town regulations.
Is the town looking after our interest or looking after yours then?
We're, we're following what the voters enacted zoning.
So if this was your neighborhood, would you like three duplexes at the end of your street if you lived in a single family home?
It's a really, you know, I mean, what I think, what happens in my neighborhood is, you know.
I've got a whole development behind my house. Got a whole lot.
Things, a lot of things have changed in Lincoln over the years.
Well, and again, now that I know that that's not a road, now I have even more of a concern because. If there's an emergency vehicle, how are they gonna even get to those, you know, now get the driveway?
I mean, it's, my chief is gonna review the plans.
Turn around and do be the same way they do to anybody.
Doesn't work, that's right. You, you have this my home from the street, you can't have the access to those homes from the street. Have to run the hose up the driveway.
Direct the board please, we can hear you.
Speaking about the, I propose driving the top of Mansion Hill. So if the fire in those homes, the fire truck can't get in the driveway, the most home you get is from the street. So how would they access those properties to fight a fire?
The fire chief would have, have looked at it. Yeah. He has one.
I think they drive it off, off feet wide.
Has the fire chief looked at this plan, Pete?
Uh, I did, I have. Smitted the town, thought that was part of. Well, I've done by a network. And I've done, by outside, like, said the road is looking, we have wind five bucks, the town five bucks, they really turn around at the end of those roads and they get.
Anyone else have any thought, any other comments? He, Jamie, Jamie up first. Oh, I was talking to the other team.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
I realize realtors and developers are gonna make money. So the government sticker code. Playing incentive, for these people wanting to outstep and their property to live, to retire. As the community has, as the children's land, for my kitchen window looks right directly on Mansion Hill. So the children, you've got the elderly lot, you've got people that just love to live in the rice. To minimal, minimal traffic there. The traffic, you're saying duplexes and helpers, so that's not just a family per home. And it's not the average family that can afford or used to be able to afford to live here, to raise a family. My daughter, my stepdaughter just came back from Montana. Being pregnant, having a baby and her fiance, they couldn't touch us. Mm-hmm, they couldn't touch it. He grew up here. He's still looking to help the townspeople. They're looking for the fear, for the ones that want to rent and make more money and make more money. These people, in all of their good hearts, wanted a place to live, to enjoy. I have, finally, right behind me, my father's father was selling that piece of land last year. When my father was dying, I took my father over, taking people to court, cutting down my trees. And then they had the fall to asking, how do I know you own the land? What's the name of, name on your street? My name. How do I know you own the land? But I didn't pursue it. My dad took precedence over anything. But now, my daughter, if her curtains are open, they can see in her bed. If I'm laying bed with my husband, my curtains are open because I bought because it's humid, they're looking. I, they. A tank of bed on the ground, it doesn't matter because I like nature, windows open, they're looking in. These people that have to deal with. He's gonna be taken down and I know that path very well up behind these buildings because when I got four, I rode there. Up behind Tony Drappo's house. Or even up Route Three, Montlo, right straight up Mansion Hill to Campus World, you know, across the road, Route Three, up to. Up to Bonn. And I guarantee I get off my horses double times because I would be up almost in the house in life. And I would not stray my horse. So I walked, they walked through it, I walked through it. I would put myself in mud so they could be on the right of ground. That is how, when it's people not liking, they live there. These people don't live there. They're not, they don't, they don't care. Okay, I'm not trying to be an asshole here, but start thinking of the people that have lived here. People that have lived here, not out for the mighty dollar, but want to live in a way that's life. There's gonna be so much congestion on Mansion Hill, if you come down from Mansion Hill. It's, it will be pathetic. The kids won't be able to play in the road like they do now, going ball, going from neighbor to neighbor. You know, playing basketball like the street, they can't do it because there's gonna be so much traffic. And you can tell me that you could put speed signs up, it's just. We hear complaining about, your father's been complaining about traffic on Polo Road. So many people have talked about one-way streets and all sorts of stuff. Anybody who comes to the, this area knows hallway, uh. Polo Road is a bypass from Main Street's congestion. They like this close to Calum State, which the board has said many times, shut them off. Cause they don't want sidewalks, want, they don't want four-way traffic. We already helped people pass it. When they should be passing on Polo Road. And it is a breakaway. It is a breakaway. I didn't want to leave the apartment here only, but we're gonna. But I'm glad it's there now because so many people that keep us up in the few hours of the morning. Sweeling their brakes, spinning around the corner, racing up and down the street, set fire, fireworks, everything is stuck there. Right there. And this is gonna be a problem, we're back in here. If you guys. Do choose to let this go through, I sure as hell hope you do not take on the roads. Because there's been a lot of controversy on who owned and didn't own certain roads up in New Mountain. And then the town took on roads up in New Mountain. What were they doing this summer? Fixing roads up in New Mountain that washed away. Who pays for that in the long run? Taxpayers. Think of the whole picture, not just the here and now, or what's being proposed, but think of how many people, not only that, wildlife is gonna have to find. You have a cat from Lord Rouse, which I know is minimal to people, but to people that really care about nature and what we used to have. It will be gone. It will be gone. Open your eyes up to the city, not just what certain people want, but what everybody. Those have been people that have. Probably that like spending into what they own now. You know, but just. Let the kids be able to play, run across the street to their neighbor. You know, let's be properly walk down the hill in peace without having to jump to the side of the road that I watch. People from Lincoln Rangers going up always walk right. It is bad. And I had complained to the smoke board before about. The traffic on Polo Road and the needs for the elderly and the hot holes that might be up there. You know, it's, it's, it involves so many things. Just need, please, for the sake of the environment, for the sake of these people to put their, our dirty money into a place of beauty. Don't let it be destroyed by the cream. You know, you know what I do? I don't understand what he was talking about, Star of the Door, it's gonna stop me to our town corner, but for years. He's not going to watch me here. They were saying, our. What's going on? It's gonna be that much more tax. I didn't, I do probably a hundred feet, a hundred feet. My house, no, there are. And our water pressure has gone right down. Right down. You tell me this is gonna impact our water, it's not gonna impact our. Water coming off the hill, kids playing, being kids, which is good. Today's life is just. It's bigger than that. And it's do, do allow us to go through. I pray guys not let them tap into the hill. Find some way to tap through Forest Bridge, which will bring it up to the Main Street. They wanna go up the tank, they wanna go down Main Street, take the traffic off Polo Road, take the traffic off Mansion Hill, let these people. Let these people live the life they're accustomed to and not be. They'll probably sell, which is why real estate and developers want, because they make that money again. Let these people, it is, they want. It is bad, it is very bad. And now, on this. We have, I assume in the whole property that was bought was dairy land? Okay, um. Do they own that yellow trailer on Pollard Road? Where the berries grew up? You know, Paul. It is a separate problem, they have not owned by this at all. So I don't see why they can't connect on to Forest Bridge, that is, one time, Forest Bridge was awesome about coming down here. Um, you know, I mean, if you go up to Maple Street, it's plenty right now, you go, Forest Bridge right there, off strip. From mansion hill, just a proposed development. Happens at Forest Bridge Road, gets the traffic off mansion hill where the kids are growing and the elderly have decided they want to live, retire. Let it go through a community that's used to being crammed with house on top, 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 top. They're here for skiing, or maybe renting out, while they go live in Florida in the winter and come here in the summer, or vice versa. You know, I mean, think of the whole picture and who you're impacted, not just developers. Which, I think, I mean, the level that it.
Thank you, Jamie.
There's a couple things. First, Forest Bridge is a private road, so, I mean, we can't force Forest Bridge, let anybody drive through the property. Mansion Hill is a town road, so it's legal access. Um, and just a reminder, it wasn't that many years ago that the selectmen brought to, um, the town to purchase mansion hill. At a very, very reasonable price, I shouldn't say mansion, but the land is the top, the standard top. Um, the gerrys negotiated a very reasonable price to town, and that was voted down at town meeting. Again, we tried, it didn't happen. Um, the voters decided they didn't want the town own it, they wanted it to be developed, evidently. Um, and at the previous hearing tonight, we heard several times, don't tell people what to do with their property. Don't tell people they can't, that's what tremendous, multiple people, however, now are being asked, tell these people not to go on their property. I, they're just, it's a double standard. I just wanna point that out.
Okay, thank you. Ma'am, Cheryl?
Yeah, Cheryl Ewing, um, I think, uh, going back to what Frank said and, uh, Gary Catherine, you know, pointed out. Uh, and I mentioned, I think the greatest concern here is about the wetlands, the overdevelopment of the property. I don't see a reason why they can't develop it, but to develop it in that type of, uh, density. I think is, uh, you know, a poor choice. I think we're asking for a big problem. With, uh, what's going on with those wetlands and the drainage down into Pollard Road. You're building your six million dollar police station, and you haven't really dealt with the drainage down there on the edge of, uh, the end of mansion hill. That, that culvert overflows, what are you gonna do there? Now you're gonna let all this other water, not be taken care of by nature. But, you know, be bastardized by, you know, the stripping of the forest, you know, you know, more concrete than you need. And, and, and density that's not really, um, appropriate to the land. And that's what it really comes down to. The density is too much. You know, you can't stop the owners from trying to do something, but the density is too much. And the other fact that you mentioned on HOA, being in mansion hill, and my parents were owners from the beginning in that development. Um, yeah, we maintain all those roads. Now, why should the town have to, you know, run around and maintain this, this little development? That has, you know, things that need to be taken care of in the way of the wetlands, the infiltration basins. I mean, this to me just smacks of what an HOA should be. Not the town's responsibility. My farming contract for mansion hill went from eighteen thousand to thirty-six thousand dollars over the last three years. We all pay the same taxes that everyone else in town. These guys will come in and have town-maintained roads. With a HOA setting.
They don't have yet.
What's that?
They don't have them yet.
Right.
Like, we're just saying, the problem here is the wetlands, and already the water pumps you all know about, down on Pollard Road. Beautiful community center and daycare and all that. Can we fastenize that? Lessen the development, make it smaller, and it'll probably work within the constraints of the land.
W- w- would you suggest there's a reasonable density, if I might ask?
Well, I'm looking at these lots, and I'm looking at the size of like the mansion hill. I think, how the size of what it is, wouldn't be reasonable. Because first of all, you shouldn't have any houses on anything where these wetlands exist. So right there, you can take out lot twenty-five, lot twenty-one, lot twenty-eight. Lot nineteen, lot eighteen, lot sixteen, over here in the corner, lot twenty-three. And then, you know, up in that left-hand corner where you wanna put in that infiltration basin, and that duplex shouldn't even go in there. Down that lower left corner, it can't even go in there. Where all the drainage is. You know, and you're gonna just be running all that water down these four peoples' backyards. I mean, there's, there's a lot of drainage coming off that mountain. And you got Forest Ridge, which, you know, that's in place, you know, you can't take it back, you can't be an Indian giver to take it back. But when that, more of that development happens, what do you think's gonna happen below it?
Oh, you had something to say?
No, I mean, I appreciate all the comments that, that you're giving here tonight about this development, but, you know. I, I lived here a long time too, and the ordinances that were voted in were voted in by everybody. And they were the ordinances that tell us what we can approve and what we can't approve. You know, and they can change constantly, constantly. Every year, we go through the ordinances and we update them. But we don't see anybody coming in until it affects you in your backyard. You know, so, I gotta tell you, it, it's tough sometimes to sit up here and, and, as a longtime Lincoln resident. And, you know, before, eh, before any of this happened, I thought it was a pretty damn nice place to live. I could go out hunting and fishing and not see anybody. You know, you, you can play in the street, just like Tammy said, but now, you know, a lot of things have changed. I'm not complaining, you, you can't stop progress, but what you can do is you can control it, and you can try and make it so it's easier to live with. But, you know, if you own a piece of property, I mean, I look at this person who owns this piece of property. And is designing something that goes by the regulations that were voted in by the taxpayers that I don't like it, you know? I feel kinda bad for him, I mean, in, in a way, because he's, he's building towards the regulations that everybody voted in. What do you expect him to do?
Okay, Jamie in the back had her hand up first.
Um, I don't believe anybody's telling anybody not to develop, they just ask them to be respectful. Respectful of the original owners, or original for this time. And not to crowd it and overcrowd it, and respect the wetlands. Respect the environment, because this is gonna destroy it in multiple ways. But as far as living arrangements and developing, anybody can do anything they want. In my opinion, but not to be a point of harming publics, not to be a point of harm. I have a piece of property that I have to give back, um, the town merged together. I was told by a former worker here, that I couldn't develop anything on it because of setbacks. Almost one of an eight. But what are they asking for? Put a house on, with no land. The setbacks. So see, it's kind of a catch-22 on who's doing what and where it is, on how we can start around here. Um, I have learned very, very, very strongly. Take with a grain of salt what is told to my face, what you see and actually physically see yourself, you will notice the truth. And unfortunately, I feel this is going the wrong way. These four holes here are gonna be screwed over. Again, it's for money. And they're also gonna get screwed over with money because of the water, and because of the sewer, which I think you touched on again, because I have said that I don't understand what he was talking about, because it's something I've never dealt with, but, you know, they get what they want. These people, that's the bottom line.
You know, we're gonna wrap it up in a few minutes and continue the hearing. Hold on one second. I don't think these two have had a chance. So Mark, Alan?
Uh, yes, I'm Mark Alanta, I own the property at the end of Valley View Lane, number twenty-one, Valley View Lane. I have a couple of questions. I know Ray Corber's still on, I hope he's listening. So I know that there was a perk test done on the lot above ours. And I know it was done because they came across my property to dig the hole, but the hole is only six feet in to the property line, it's nowhere near. Where there is poor percolation, so I was always curious about, you can just put a perk test anywhere on the property, and that's good enough?
Is that a, is that a question for me?
Yes, Ray, I was just curious about perk tests and how they're chosen, the location of the perk test.
The location of the perk test is chosen based on where you want your, uh, stormwater management practice, so for this particular, um. Project, they have two infiltration basins, uh, that are being proposed, and so the, um, ideally, the perk test should be within the footprint of the basin itself, because that's, that's where the practice is gonna be located. So the perk test is used to determine the X, the infiltration rate of the soil. Uh, so, and that ultimately, that information, that data gets plugged into the computer model. That simulates the runoff on the site and the, uh, the runoff going into and through, uh, the infiltration practice.
So I could be mistaken, but I know that Rex Calder dug a hole and put a stake in the ground. I assumed it was a perk test and it was just above my lot, which is not where that, uh, runoff basin is supposed to be. So does anybody go out and verify where they perk tested?
Uh, in the plans that they submitted, and Keith, you can confirm this for me. Uh, they do, they have identified across the property where they, where they did test pits and did perk tests, is that correct, Keith?
That is correct, so we did more than just those two within basins, we did numerous to try and get stormwater to figure it out, make sure we're handling stormwater. So even though we did a, did a correct test, we talk about, doesn't mean that we, we didn't put a basin there, but where we have those two, above ground bases. We do have the application testing in those locations.
Where we got all the test pits, we had GPS there, which picks it up within a fraction of an inch.
Okay, so perk test does not mean an infiltration basin, just another place to test the percolation?
Uh, yeah, because you don't, when you're starting your develop, when you're starting to lay out your development, do the design, you're not quite sure where, you know. You may have a stormwater infiltration practice, so you do several perk tests initially, um, across the property. Um, you have an idea about where you're probably gonna put a stormwater management practice, so you try to, um, obviously. You know, pick, pick a location where, you know, the infiltrate, infiltration practice winds up. But at the end of the day, that's one of the things we look for is, um, if they're putting in infiltration practice, you know, we wanna see a test pit there. We wanna understand what the, uh, what the geology is.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, I'm concerned about the water volume from the three duplexes running down Valley View Lane. I know that, uh, I believe it's Dave Rogers' house, faces directly up Valley View Lane, and I know anytime there's a heavy water situation, his house gets flooded. I know there's a catch basin not sh- not far down the road from my lot, but I'm very concerned about curb cuts. Down Valley View Lane, when that water is flowing, I'm really concerned it's gonna infiltrate all the budding lots of Valley View Lane. When someone does a water te- uh, valuation of where the water's going, does anybody assess the street to see if it can handle the volume of water? That's running down it? I know that you and Nate will probably be involved in that, but I'm just curious if there's been any study or any plan to add any sort of, um, curbs to prevent the water from infiltrating the lots, you know, coming down the street and curling into the lots.
Ray, you want me to answer that?
Yeah, go ahead, Keith.
So for those two places that they talked about, you mean, we have proposed subterranean infiltration basins. That would take the runoff from the roof, so that's how we're infiltrating that area. And again, same thing that this charging point was the top of Valley View Lane is a point, we're getting where, we are making sure the volume is reduced in the twenty-five-year storm. And the post-condition from the pre, so net zero has been discussed. So again, that's in the drainage, that's in the drainage model. So that's how we're getting infiltration from that, added curvaceous into the. So exactly, each of those three lots, um, propose eight, nine, and ten.
Okay, thank you. So, and there's underground storage of the water runoff, okay?
Correct, so it says storage, but it also infiltrates, correct.
Okay, thank you for that. And I wasn't aware of that plans could be made available to the general public. If I'm in town on Friday, can I pick up a copy of the plans for the site?
Just have to email me and ask for them.
Okay, thank you, Carol. That's my last question, thank you for your time, and I appreciate everybody staying so late tonight, thank you.
Yeah, Le Colly, you have a question?
I do, just have a couple of comments. Uh, my name is Jeff Delacollie, I'm an owner at Mansion Hill Condominium Association. Um, yeah, I've, I've kinda taken some notes on everybody's comments, and, and I agree, it's kinda like a, uh, there's a few NIMBYs here. Not in my backyards, but, uh, we do kinda have to adhere to the rules of the town. Uh, people have the right to do what they wanna do on their property, but, uh, I, I agree that this is a very large project in an area that, uh, is kinda pristine, um, but we just wanna make sure that everything gets done correctly and right. Um, there's a lot of concerns about stormwater, and me in parti- I in particular are concerned about that, um. The drainage basin that is, uh, PP dash one. Um, I don't know, I didn't, I kinda read through the stormwater report. And, uh, I've heard a couple of comments that there's gonna be a net zero of water drainage, uh, uh, or watershed. So what is the percentage of water that that basin is gonna hold in comparison to what currently is going to be, um, relative to what uh, remains on the property, on that, on the two parcels? So is that catch basin, so when you said that, that, the water, uh, you need to be at net zero. Is that basin itself gonna handle a majority of the volume of water that is gonna, that would initially, or that currently would be dispersed elsewhere? Cause that to me kinda raises a red flag with frozen ground, uh, lack of maintenance. That if it does get frozen over, water's just gonna come over and into the mansion hill driveway. So, that's, that's my first question on that. Um, I can let you answer that, or I can go right on to my next one?
Good trip, you want, so, correct, so, as I mentioned before, that net zero, it's not just, it's the whole site, it's as the four discharge points I mentioned. And that area over there on the west property is additional, so that basin again is basically replicating and actually increasing the amount of infiltration that is in that dis- that goes to that discharge point. And we talked earlier, when we visit how it's now concentrated outlet, but the point is that you actually, as a whole, will have less runoff coming on to your site. Post-construction than you, you do now. So that, that kinda sees that, and the idea about the, we've talked numerous times about like the maintenance, correct? As a concern, ten years down the road, if it's not maintained properly, you're not gonna get the infiltration rates that we're showing. That's why, again, it's a requirement of if it's the HOA, to maintain them, and they gotta submit their records. That may mention that they do though, so therefore, they're gonna be held accountable to make sure that it's maintained properly, operated properly. Five, ten, you know, fifteen years down the road.
Okay, so part of that, um, part of the storm or the drainage report is that there is a stormwater, um, maintenance plan. And it does say that it's the repart- the responsible party, post-construction is either homeowner or homeowners association. But then it mentions property owner, so is that you, is that the developer? Is that the homeowners association, or is that the individual parcel owner?
So that's what we're talking about, right, during that, we'll talk, you know, talk about fire, but we.
I didn't hear what he said?
So if the town doesn't accept the, the road and the utilities that associate the road, then. So if the town doesn't accept the the road and the utilities that associate with the road, then it would be an HOA, it wouldn't be a pri- it wouldn't be the lot owner one. It'd be the HOA responsible for the mains.
So would the homeowners association uh be willing to enter into a surety bond? That guarantees that any um damage to any uh abutters? That they would be responsible to pay for that damage through some sort of bond and escrow?
I can't speak to that now. We have to discuss that, but I know, like you said, they're responsible for the maintenance and the town checks me so that they're doing your property.
So what's the guarantee that this design is not built properly, but yet everybody else uh? Kinda gets flooded? What kind of, what kind of um, I guess recourse do these people have based on this design?
I think that's for me to answer. I mean, again, with the ideas that we.
It's gonna be required to post a performance bond.
Okay, that, okay, that was my, so yeah, charity performance, good, okay. Um, that's kind of all I had. Um. Good luck to all those buyers who are purchasing this land, which is or these parcels that are really kinda unusable, but. I guess this is sucker bone every day. Good luck. Uh, that's all I can have for the night. Thank you.
This time I'd like to close the public comment for the moment and then continue this hearing until February fourteen.
A motion of both, so.
Okay, all in favor? Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah.
Uh, my name's Steven Bell. I'm a resident of Mansion Hill. I've lived there for seventeen years. I wanted to save a couple of my concerns. Uh, one of them was water. Uh, we've had six feet of water in our basement on a couple of different. Always seems to stem about the center. This year, we actually had groundwater bubbling up. Slabbing on the foundation. So I don't know what else to relate it to other than recent development on the hill, Forest Ridge, whatever it is. Uh, recent weather patterns, uh but it's a big concern of ours. I basically year round, aside from those few occasions at the childcare center until this year, so. Uh, looking forward, I'm not sure what to expect. As far as development on our street goes. Three children that play on that street every day, uh. As far as.
Sometimes it'll be ten kids in our house playing soccer, basketball. The traffic is a very big concern.
As far as access goes, it'd be really nice to see the access to this, if it does go through the um hall room, portrait, whatever.
Close public comment. Is there a motion to continue this hearing uh till February fourteen?
So.
Second, all in favor?
I think we can make sure it works with that.
Excuse me, Jim, are you all set with me?
Yes, Ray. Have a nice evening.
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
So let's hit back to the changes.
I'll make a motion we approve them all.
Let's, let's go on one of them. You know, let's just do it just in case someone challenges us later.
Which one are you on?
Number one, create two general use, two use districts.
What?
Create the two general use districts. I mean, if you make a change.
We're not gonna make any changes. We've already, we've all discussed. It's it's kinda ridiculous that we're sitting there a little bit, like kinda zoning many dangers.
Make the same one, take about two minutes.
All right, let's, let me just fold the board. Who wants to get these done today?
The question before the poll, is there time to meet again prior to deadline to get it on the ballot?
I mean, there I.
Well, the second, the s- the second hearing is scheduled for January twenty four.
It's already been noticed.
It's already been noticed.
Okay, so that would give time to get it on.
Right, but if we make a change.
We do it again. So we'd have to.
Well, we could have an odd, an odd.
You can't, you can go with the twenty four hour voting rule?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, there you go.
Oh, dude, bet.
So you're gonna do all the paperwork? You're gonna have to sit here late longer?
I'm gonna fold the boards. Joe, you wanna do these tonight? Paul?
No.
Now we're gonna tie.
Okay, the reason my, let me, let me.
Yeah, I.
Yeah.
I would, I would, I would vote to to table the rest of the public hearings till next meeting. It's, we've already sent out the notice. We can do that no problem, in my mind.
Yes, wanna do it, that's fine. So let's uh.
That would be basic. We keep picking that down the road, kick that down.
We get into county base camp, but you're gonna be here till one AM if you do that.
Like I said, kick them both down.
All right. So let's see. I'll just go through the. The only thing we haven't talked about, the only one we've talked about is short term rentals. So is there a motion? And we talked about um Tom Tremblay's, we've got to move. We gotta move to two general use zones. Revised characteristics of the village center district.
Yeah.
Add definition of usable space.
Yep.
Revised definition of multifamily housing, add definition of a dwelling unit. That's it. So is there a motion to continue the hearing on these matters until January twenty four?
So.
There is a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, you back seated? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, back seated. Pemmy based.
Make a motion that we push that off another, the next agenda.
We have, what do we have on the twenty fourth, Carol? Do we have anything?
We have these things, twenty, twenty four.
With the rental ordinance.
I I think um the other stuff is for the fourteenth.
Yeah.
Um, because I've just gotten two or three applications for uh digital um subdivision. Which, oh. Opened that site plan review for. The roadway and the. For um.
It was set on the twenty fourth.
So, well, it's very important. So I'm thinking just have continued uh the second hearing for this.
Okay, can we continue to, we can just make a base camp on the twenty fourth. Is there a motion to move the Pemmy base camp to the fourth?
Don't move.
Second?
I'll take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great.
It's very easy why we can't meet instead of. To catch up on some of the stuff, so these meetings aren't so long. Can we meet? Every week, every week for, you know, just throw, just throw a meeting in.
Yeah, I mean, we have budget committee next Wednesday, so.
Well, this is a hard time of year because you've got budget committee, you got all that stuff, but I mean, you know.
Welcome to my world.
Yeah, I mean, we should be, you know, we should be able to.
Okay.
So the meeting's going till eleven, twelve o'clock. That just doesn't, you know, you don't make.
How often does that happen?
It happens a lot.
Times you get out here in an hour.
Why do you save one person for the last?
You're, but you're not on the agenda. You're another business.
Oh, I love it, Mike.
Hey.
All right.
So any um, any other business on the board?
One question.
Yeah.
The owner says we can have storage, uh forty foot storage state of your property, is that correct? They're accepting it in general use?
Believe so.
And why they said, and why they, and why is this town and the planning board would have to meet my three storey yours on my property? They're legal. Just remember that. Well, I have a question.
Okay, I don't, the planning board is president or isn't going after you.
So I have a planning question too.
Yeah.
While we're actually, if Steve, Stephen. Here is um, what's happening with your property? Nothing.
Well, I'm there.
Yeah.
Well, nothing. That's what I'm here for. Yes. Tip zero bill. I asked him if he was scamming me when answering. He said, he said he had a contractor. He was so thrilled and then I asked him what the name was and I had to ask. He gave me the name of the contractor. He gave me, he said he's coming and he never comes. My health is cracking, the porch, I was thinking worse.
We can, we want the agenda.
Yeah, we should put him on the agenda. Can we? Yeah, why don't we put this back on the agenda? One, we go to the fourteenth, so we have time to notify the product.
Yeah.
All right.
We don't know where to go, what to do, if nothing's happening.
Okay. Cal, have you, you have email still?
They can put that on you, Jim.
Put on for the uh fourteenth of February, happy gone.
Hey. Okay, then I suspect we're gonna have two subdivisions.
Saying, oh, I mean.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, okay. Well, we'll get these two, these guys coming back.
You guys did a great job tonight, by the way.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, we could do that. Yeah, why don't we put some, put you guys on first on the fourteenth, that way.
Oh, that'd be great, I think.
Steve can rejoin the board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just one other thing.
Yeah.
Let's do a journey.
Follow me in the motion. Joe second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi.
Thank you.